Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First thing I want to do is I'm going to do a quick roll call, and in following the roll call, we'll have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. So, roll call, please. Councilman Waddell.
Here.
All right, Councilman Robinbart.
Yes.
Councilman Spears.
Here.
Councilman Andrews.
Here.
And Councilman David Joyner.
Here.
Bill, Mayor Bill Sappel is out, and I am here, Clifford Barnett. Okay? Thank you for all being here. Welcome to this, to our regular city council meeting. At this time, we're going to introduce Assistant Chief Tom Robinson, who will come, he's from the fire department, to give us our invocation. We'll ask everyone to please stand, and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance afterward. Tom?
Let us pray. Lord, we are meeting tonight to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion, and we will do the right by all concerned. Thank you for being our source of guidance during this meeting and every day. In your name we pray, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have one presentation tonight, and we're going to ask Ms. Susan Nettelman and Gloria Izel to come forward. Hi, come on up. Come on up. Come on up. You're welcome. Thank you. Hi.
Hi Gloria, and hi Susan. Thank you guys for being here. Thank you.
All right, I'm Mayor Protem. Cape Fear Garden Club Incorporated, celebrating 100 years of service to the Wilmington, North Carolina, 1925 to 2025. Whereas on February 11th, 1925, 12 charter members met at the Great Hall at St. James Church to establish the Cape Fear Garden Club, CFGC. And whereas CFGC's focus has been to enhance the city of Wilmington and New Hanover County through a century of beautification, conservation, and environmental projects, adding vegetation throughout the city, beginning with the club's support of the city's purchase of Greenfield Lake in 1925, adding hundreds of azaleas surrounding the park. And whereas CFGC works to beautify medians, byways, and parks, including being one of the sponsors of the Riverfront Park in downtown Wilmington, and has worked with the city park staff on an urban garden within the park with native plants, and plans to install a sculpture designed by Wilmington native Domey Gorham in May of 2025. And whereas CFGC funds standing grants to the University of North Carolina at Wilmington and Cape Fear Community College for endowed scholarships to the Audubon Society to conserve and manage islands in the Lower Cape Fear River, which provide nesting sites for migrating birds. And whereas the CFCG is engaged in ongoing environmental and conservation efforts by establishing Wilmington, North Carolina as a certified wildlife habitat community, mentoring youth gardeners, maintaining a rain garden at local schools, planting edible gardens within the city, and actively stirring many other projects to enhance our coastal community. And whereas CFGC petitioned the North Carolina General Assembly to name the Eastern Tiger Swallow Tail Butterfly, Papello Glaskus, the official state butterfly, which became Secession Law 145-38, when ratified on the 11th day of June 2012. Therefore, I, in the place of Bill Sappel and members of the Wilmington City Council, do hereby recognize the year 2025 as a centennial celebration year of the Cape Fear Garden Club Incorporated. Let us look back and rejoice in our heritage. May it inspire us to continue the good works of those who have preceded us, and to uphold the good name of the Cape Fear Garden Club. Helen W. McCall, July 16, 1956, President from 1956 to 1958. Signed, Bill Sappel. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You want to say something?
We just want to say thank you to the Wilmington City Council. It's just been a joy working with the city and everyone, that we get to meet new people, and we're all working toward the good of our community. So, that's been one of the efforts that we've put in, and we're going to celebrate this year because we won't, we won't be here in the next 100 years. So, thank you.
I'd like to say that I see a lot of young women out there, and women our, at my age, that you could become a member of our club. We're, we always have openings, or not always, but this year we do. So, come join us, ladies.
And they would go to the website to learn how to become a member?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The website, GFGC.
GFGC, all right. He wants to take a picture. Say cheese. All right, thank you so much. God bless you. Mr. Jordan, welcome in. Let me help you down. Okay, good, good. All right, take your time. There you go. All right, good. All right, the next item on the agenda is to, our consent agenda. I'll ask the members of council, if anyone has any questions or wishes to pull any item from the consent agenda items, item C1 or C2. Anyone? No. Okay, if so, we'll handle them separately. If not, the councils, what are your wishes? What are your wishes? Okay, there's, oh, there's a motion by Sollet and seconded by Councilman Waddell. Okay? All those in favor, if you've known by the sign, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, ayes have it, and it is so ordered. Okay? Next item on the agenda is our public information. Public information is 30 minutes, and it's limited to five minutes per speaker. We have a multiple number of speakers today. We have, I believe, five, we have six. First person to come to us before us is Mr. Jordan Petit. He's going to talk to us about retirement benefits for firefighters. Mr. Jordan, are you here? Mr. Jordan, are you here? Okay. Next item then is Mr. Michael San Clemente. He's to talk to us about the Independence Boulevard traffic.
Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening.
I am here this evening in a follow-up to my road group team member Trish Rio's presentation that was on December 3rd, 2024. Trish requested that you consider placing a pause and/or moratorium on future developments along Independence Boulevard, River Road, and Carolina Beach Road traffic corridor. And further, you consider all ongoing development and their ramifications before adding another site to an already encumbered street developed corridor. She noted it is imperative that the planning commission and town council formulate a more permanent development strategy regarding the planning and installation and infrastructure that can support traffic generated from the current and future developments. In addition, Trish stressed the importance of safety of your citizens, growth of your children, and the preservation of much-needed green space that remains. Now, it's my turn. This is my second presentation to the town council regarding the 2022's traffic studies. The Michael Baker and Kim Lee Horn reports that concentrated on the intersection of River Road and Independence Boulevard. The council agreed that there is an issue with the intersection, and a roundabout was planned. As of today, the roundabout at River Road and Independence Boulevard is an unfunded project with no set date for 2025. While the council is not willing to commit to a date for the roundabout, the council approved in 2024 an additional 257 apartments at the intersection of Carolina Beach Road and Independence Boulevard. With Watermark already approved, 507 apartments have been approved while the infrastructure on Independence Boulevard remains the same. Both 2022 traffic studies call for traffic improvements along Independence and River Road and Carolina Beach Road. Let me refresh your memory and state what the traffic study is recommending. A traffic device at the corner of River Road and Independence, Riverfront Place, Ecofarms Boulevard, and Indy West Access 2. Roundabouts are the recommendation of the Wilmington Traffic Department, and the locations I mentioned are the locations for roundabouts, but only one roundabout is planned. Traffic signals, while not the recommendation, can still be used while the planning of traffic, of roundabouts are being developed. These traffic, excuse me, these traffic signals can be implemented fairly quickly and have minimal impact on traffic. Whether roundabouts, traffic signals, or a combination of both, something must be done, and it's up to this council to address this issue now. The council has the authority to create ordinances and laws that govern the city. It is time for the council to create ordinances for developers in this city. If a developer wants to build in Wilmington, then traffic studies, excuse me, then the developer must first improve the infrastructure outside of their project based on traffic studies before breaking ground on their own projects. These ordinances will help improve traffic and roads, minimize the impact of the project on the residents, and remove the cost of the traffic devices on the city and the taxpayers who live in the city. It is time for this council to represent the citizens of the city, and we are asking that developers start improving the roads and infrastructure before they start their own projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Hold on.
Mr. Moden, the gentleman referenced the roundabout, that it had not been funded. I seem to remember that it had been funded, and it was scheduled for construction. For that indication to folks here, can you let us know where we stand on that project?
Yes, sir. The project is fully funded, with the three partners being Riverlights, developer Cape Fear Commercial in the city. We're approximately at 90% design permitting still has to be accomplished, and the construction date is projected, and this is my recollection, September 9, 2025. And just would take this moment to remind council that we provided previous data on the traffic generation, that about three-quarters of the traffic that travels River Road to Independence Corridor is generated from south of the city limits. Again, three-quarters of that traffic that travels that corridor from River Road through Independence to Carolina Beach Road, our traffic count indicates three-quarters of it is from outside the city limits.
Okay.
With, with regards, with regards to the roundabout, is there, would it be possible to disseminate that information to the council, and then, I mean, these folks always come, they're very professional, and what they're asking, and I think a lot of it is certainly warranted, and I just want them to have the most up-to-date information, so we can certainly circulate it to them as well, so.
Be happy to do so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Mr. Christopher Sweptson. He's to talk about firearm safety. Mr. Sweptson, are you here? Mr. Sweptson. All right. Next, Reverend Stephen Bradley will talk about the Wilmington Police Department, Police Chief, Pastor Bradley.
Good evening to Mayor Protem and City Council. Thank you for your dedication and your service. You all know that great leadership is marked by the ability to recognize opportunities and act decisively to shape a better future. As leaders of this council, you've shown an extraordinary capacity to anticipate positive trends and guide Wilmington towards a brighter tomorrow. Your efforts have brought tangible prosperity to today and laid the foundation for continued success. However, progress does come with its own challenges. The delicate balance between addressing citizens' concerns and steering Wilmington toward long-term growth is no easy feat. It requires a forward-thinking approach, one rooted in analyzing the trends that define our community's needs. In this spirit, Chief Donnie Williams has followed your example, helping lead Wilmington towards becoming a safer, more united city. The results are undeniable. Over the past year, reported rapes have dropped 50%. Murders have decreased 8%. The violent crime has fallen nearly 20% since 2020. These aren't just numbers. They represent real lives, real families, and real progress. This achievement is a testament to Chief Williams' steady leadership and collaborative vision that prioritizes the safety and well-being of our community. This progress has earned national recognition. The White House recently sent domestic policy advisor, Nira Tandem, to Wilmington to learn from our police and fire departments, recognizing our city as a model for reducing violent crime and building stronger, safer communities. Wilmington is not just a local success story. It is an inspiration to cities across the nation. As we celebrate these milestones, we must also remember our history. The tragic events of 1898 reminds us of the consequences of intolerance, hatred, and division. We have a duty to ensure such darkness never shadows Wilmington again. Let our past guide us toward a future that embraces unity, inclusion, and justice for all. Now is not the time for hesitation or retreat. Our city stands at a pivotal moment, driven by momentum and a shared commitment to progress. With Chief Williams at the helm of our police department and your leadership at this council, we can continue to build a safer, more prosperous Wilmington for generations to come. Together, we are not just shaping a better city, we are creating a legacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Kelly Wade, and she's to speak to us on concerns for the
Hello. My name is Kelly Wade. I'm a retired law enforcement officer and now a private investigator. I'm here today because I normally handle divorces, child custody cases, but in the last three months, I have been contacted by two young women that have been raped in the city of Wilmington. I met with, the first case was a young woman I had seen in a courtroom one morning when I was with a client for a protective order. The courtroom was just for protective orders. She was sitting in the last bench of the courtroom, upset to the point of hyperventilating. I turned to the young woman to console her, and gave her my card and told her if she needed anything, please call me. As the young woman left the courtroom, I asked the domestic violence court advocate woman, could she please go out and speak to her? The advocate came back in and said that it was a rape case. A few weeks later, I received a phone call from the young woman stating that her detective stated it might be a good idea to get a P.I., which I found odd. I met with her and listened to her traumatizing story, and how she thought she did everything right, going to the hospital, not showering, preserving what evidence she could, just to find out that WPD didn't get over to the suspect one's house for almost 20 days. The couch was bloody from the rape, and when the detective went to suspect one's residence where the couch was, had been cleaned, and the detective stated that he only sprayed half of the couch to look for blood when he had a search warrant for the whole couch. I took the case, and I wrote down some names of some people that possibly could help with this case. One man was someone that worked with suspect two, the victim didn't know. I learned in the interview with this man that the suspect two does not have a set address and goes from state to state and city to city. The man was interviewing, the man that I was interviewing stated names of the girls that possibly had problems with the gentleman, suspect two, in the same aspect of this young lady. And then, also in the interview, he stated where the suspect had moved to, and what work he was doing. That was in a 30-minute interview. The victim had given this information to the detective, and he stated he wasn't chasing people down to interview them. If he had to chase someone down to interview, it would, it really wasn't going to be good or worth it. That is on tape. When the victim started questioning things and started making awareness of the lack of investigation on WPD's part, and the detective said he wasn't going to talk to her anymore, she'd have to speak to his sergeant. My client was called into WPD, and when she left after talking to the sergeant, she felt like it was her fault what happened. She stated she felt humiliated, and that she got physically sick and was throwing up on the way home. She thought she was going into WPD to possibly get some understanding of things going on, not to be victimized again. While I was working this case, I get a call from a father that's daughter had been raped while sleeping on a friend's couch in Wilmington. The suspect knew, the suspect knew one of the girls in the apartment that night. There was three girls that lived in the apartment. My client woke up, and the suspect was on top of her, and she could not get away. She was in pain. She was in shock. And when the rapist got up and started heading towards the patio door, she grabbed what she could of her clothes and ran out of the apartment. She went straight home, told her mother, and her parents took her to the hospital where she told the police what had happened, and what little she knew about the suspect. She thought she was doing the right thing. The father reached out to the detective many times, wanting to ask questions and give information. The father being upset, which is understanding, with the detective not getting back to him, he called his sergeant. The detective then called the father back and stated that he just went and talked to the girls at the apartment, and went to the suspect's house, and he was not home. And that was two weeks after the rape. Then, about two weeks ago, my now second victim was brought into WPD, which she had been going to therapy and thought possibly they might have information, or had arrested the suspect. That was not the case at all. The detective made her feel as if it was her fault, and that maybe she got something wrong, and pretty much told her there was nothing he could do. The victim told me that she felt worthless, ashamed again. She stated that the detective could have called her on the phone to humiliate her instead of bringing her in person. She stated, "I feel like I have been setback two months of therapy I have been going through." Just last week, I received a call from her father stating that his daughter was already shy, and she was a sweet and kind girl, but now she is scared, numb, shyer than before. He stated that his daughter says she doesn't want to go on with this case anymore. She wants to forget about it, to forget about what happened. With having to deal with what happened and the treatment, the detective, and the lack of investigation, why should she? I worry every day that I'm going to get a call from this loving father and tell me that she just could not take it anymore. This father has been trying to be the backbone for his daughter as she gets help for this horrible crime. Last year, I was called about a 35-year-old rape case that happened in the county. When I went to the DA's office in New Hanover County Sheriff's Department, that case and the sheriff department's detective worked it as if it happened that day, and in six months had four indictments. My two clients could be any of us in this room's daughter or granddaughter. I pray it never happens, but if anything does, I pray it's in New Hanover County. Please do not get me wrong, the WPD is not all bad, because there are some good law enforcement officers there, but everyone over there seems to be walking on eggshells and can't supervise or work like they want to or need to. I worked at WPD for 15 years, almost, and went, and we went through many of good and bad chiefs, but whichever, the officers watched after each other as family. Detectives were interviewed and put in the position that they thought was best.
Ms. Wade, Ms. Wade, let me interrupt you. Are you real close to finishing?
Yep.
Okay, go.
The detectives were interviewed and put into a position that they knew best. I can tell you this, while, a while back, Captain Tillman was over CID. He started a special victims unit just for cases like this. He picked the right ones to handle victims and that would go out and interview witnesses and suspects. I asked you to please do something to help the next victims that walk into WPD's door.
Thank you. Thank you. Our last public speaker is Ms. Nikki Fontana. Nikki, are you here? All right. And she's going to speak to us about ordinance options regarding retail sale of cats and dogs.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Mayor, Mayor Protem. I'm Councilwoman Nikki Fontana from the city of North Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. And I've been asked here today to speak to you on considering a pet ordinance where we ban the sale of animals in your city through any kind of retail stores or boutiques. In our city, we actually have done this. In 2019, I spearheaded this ordinance, along with my Humane Society Director, and also the South Carolina Humane Society Director for the state. And your residents have asked me, a few of them that are actually here today, has asked me to come and speak to you and just have you consider doing this. I understand that there's some issues, maybe within your city limits, that there are some pet stores that are maybe not following some rules and regulations that we would hope that they would follow. I do have copies of our ordinances.
Yeah, just pass them over to the clerk. All right. Thank you.
That's a copy of our city ordinance, along with my business card on there. And if you also have any questions, we, I have spoke to our city attorney, Mr. Christopher Neary, for the city of North Myrtle Beach, and he has offered his services to be able to speak to each one of you individually or as a whole, and to also speak with your city attorney. I'm here as a courtesy because I've been asked to do this.
Okay.
And, and I do respect your time, and I do respect everything that you guys do. I'm, I've been a councilwoman for 12 years now, so I understand. So, I want to be respectful, and just ask that you would look at the ordinance and consider doing this for your citizens, because you do have a group of concerned citizens for some issues that may be happening in your city. I have also been asked to speak, a couple years ago, I went down to Charleston to the School of Law and spoke down there also, and presented for them to also adopt the same ordinance. We adopted our ordinance in 2019, and then in 2021, our county, Ori County, actually adopted a similar ordinance, to be able to protect puppy mills, to stop puppy mills and breeders, and also to keep the pets safe. and breeders, and also to keep the pets safe. We also added a tethering law in there, which you'll be able to read about, for weather conditions when it's extreme heat and cold. I just ask that as elected officials, that you would take this to heart. And I feel like anytime that we have a duty to speak for someone that does not have a voice, that we take that time and we take that consideration and try to give a voice to this. Animals can't speak, so we're supposed to stand up for them and that's all I'm asking tonight.
Okay.
And I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Okay, hold on. Councilman?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to assure you that we do take it to heart.
I, I know you do.
And some years back, there was a grassroots effort and the only time I've ever picketed in my entire life was in front of a puppy mill. Not a puppy mill, it was in front of a retail pet store. And I know what goes on and I will ask our attorney, because this is, I mean, you're not the first one to bring this to us, and we've kind of been told that there was nothing we could do to prevent retail sales. And I just, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I mean, is it something different in what South Carolina law allows versus what North Carolina law allows?
Yes, sir. With regard to pet shops, the city unfortunately doesn't have any real authority to, to regulate their operation within the city limits other than zoning which areas of the city pet stores and retail stores that, that sell pets can operate in. Local governments, we're a Dillon's rule state, and so local governments are only given the authority to enforce criminal violations of acts of animal cruelty by individuals. We are not allowed to regulate these pet shops. That specifically is reserved for the Attorney General's Office through the State Department of Agriculture. And so local governments have not been given the authority to do that directly other than individuals who are committing acts of, of animal cruelty. And that goes through the New Hanover County Sheriff's Animal Welfare Office. And so we're not really able to do a lot outside of zoning within the city limits. There is a hotline with the AG's office that you can call if you believe that a pet shop or any other place that's selling pets is, is a quote puppy mill or is doing something illegal, but we're not allowed to take any enforcement action from a city's perspective.
Well, we could certainly, instead of individuals, we could certainly make that call as a council and encourage our neighboring councils and other people to do the same thing.
Yes, sir. I would encourage all of you to please do that. I was actually going to send each of you an email, but I thought my presence here today would mean a little more than an email. I'm just asking you personally to do this also. I had an experience with a puppy mill puppy that I did not know was, it was a gift for my birthday and when we went to pick it up or pick her up, it was a puppy now. And it was heartbreaking. And three years later, she almost died because she was sick. And I called the breeder and said, told her, hey, just want to give you a heads up, my dog has Addison's disease, in case anybody else in the litter has it. She asked me why I was calling her and if I wanted another puppy to exchange it. I'd already had this dog for the year, three years, this was like my child. So I kind of take this to heart, so that's why I'm here tonight in front of you guys speaking. And I do encourage you to please call your county, please call your AG, call whoever you need to call. And if I need to come back and help speak or if you want to pass my phone number on, I'll be glad to do that. I have friends in the Best Friend Society. I have friends that are the directors of the Humane Society for the state of South Carolina and North Carolina. So we will all be glad to gather together and to help do whatever you need to get done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come up here.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for having me.
We're now ready to go into our, um, public hearing. Public hearing number one is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close and repair or demolish the dwelling at thirteen fifteen Marston Avenue as unfit for human habitation and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. And I recognize now manager, Tom Colton, Tom Moulton for staff presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of council. Brian Renner, neighborhood compliance manager, represent this information.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, council. Tonight, we're going to talk about thirteen fifteen Marston Avenue. So this is a single-family house. It's built in approximately nineteen twenty-eight. It's a vacant house. When we started our case, it had been occupied by Mr. Pigford and Mr. Pigford passed away during the course of our case. And it is currently in the ownership of the heirs. This is a view from Marston Avenue. So we started our case back in January of 2020. Came from a complaint. As I said, it was occupied at the time of initial inspection. We took this case to hearing in October of 2021. Mr. Pigford, his ex-wife and his son attended that hearing. We issued the minimum, the minimum housing finding of fact in order to repair or demolish in November and that expired in August of 2022. After the hearing, there were no improvements or repairs referred to several programs. The owner did vacate the house, but, but as noted, he did pass away in September of 2023 and the heirs have been working on the estate since then. The tax value of the building, this is based on a 2021 tax value, the 2024 tax values are the same. The building is sixty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. Our estimated cost of repair at that time was thirty thousand eight sixteen, which puts us at seventy-five percent, which would be dilapidated by the state's minimum housing code. The sections of the minimum housing code are outlined there. These are some photos, the major problems with this, this house or the roof coming in. And then there are also some major floor issues in the rear in the kitchen. Here we can see the conditions of the roof. This is on the backside. This is on the inside. There are several holes in the roof. Ceilings are coming in, a lot of, of black growth and water containers inside the building. Here's an example of a hole in the roof. This is on the backside of the house in the kitchen. Part of the floor is actually collapsing on the side of the house. You can see that in this photo on the right where all of the furniture is caved into the floor. So what we're looking at with this ordinance before you is approval of the ordinance to vacate, close, repair, demolish. Obviously, that would maintain the authority to keep the dwelling vacant and secure in case somebody breaks in, we'll be able to secure that immediately. And then we're looking at ninety days for the owners to repair or demolish the dwelling. I believe the owners may be here. I spoke with them a few weeks ago as we were scheduling this and I believe they intended to come. And I think their intent is to sell it, but I'm not one hundred percent sure, so I'll allow them to speak what their intent is. But my recommendation would be to move forward with this and allow us to handle it after ninety days if appropriate.
Okay. Councilman Rivingbark?
Since you, your office has been working with this, how many extensions have, has there been so far?
So when we look at the, the timeline of this case, right, so we sent our initial notice back in 2020. There was, let's go back to my little timeline slide, I think that'll help me explain this a little bit better. So the term extension, right, when we send our initial notice, there's typically a thirty-day, hey, please respond to us, we'd like to find a resolution. So from our initial notice back in January 2020, we didn't schedule this for hearing until October of 2021, so that's a year and a half.
Can I stop you, can I stop you right there? I just want to be clear. On January the fourteenth, the neighbor complained, we got involved, the city.
Correct.
Was there any instructions or any requests made via your office or this council as a result of that complaint and right after that?
Yeah, so on that initial interaction, we began trying to connect Mr. Pigford with Warm and the city's programs and we really tried to, to find an avenue for a resolution. We actually, I believe we're working with Warm quite a bit on this one, including up to the hearing in October of 2021. And then that, on that, there was I think a six-month timeframe on there back to August of 2022.
So, so from January the fourteenth, 2020 to the October of 2021, what's that, that's year and a half?
Year and a half.
And, and it was occupied completely during that period of time?
Correct.
Okay. And so then along comes November two of 2021, a week, a month later, and we had, the housing order was to what at that time, to demolish it?
It was to repair or demolish, correct, and vacate.
And so what did we do then?
At that point, the order was issued. The owner did vacate the house with the assistance of his family. And then we worked with them again, trying to connect them with programs, finding, trying to find an avenue for resolution. As you know, funding is often a struggle with these types of properties. If I recall correctly, Mr. Pigford's challenge was that he owned other land in the city and a restriction with a lot of these programs is you can't have other assets other than the home. And I believe that's what his problem was.
Okay, so on November the second, did we grant another extension?
So on August second, 2022, when that order expired, that was the, the legally required compliance timeline that council can take into consideration, that November to August. So at that point, I could say we issued, we issued citations on this property, thirty-five hundred dollars in citations were issued. There is a public nuisance lien on the property for two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for us cleaning it up at one point, but conversations continued. It's again, trying to find a resolution, trying to connect with the appropriate program. The reason this is coming to council now, part of it was delays in getting it here because of other cases that were ahead of it. Part of it is Mr. Pigford passing away and efforts on the estate.
In 2023, he passed away, September of 2023, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're talking another year and a half. And in that time, since January the fourteenth of 2020, I mean, it had, it had to have been livable, it had water and sewer, electric.
That was part of the, that was part of the case is the water was actually, if I recall correctly, I'd have to go back to the findings of fact, but the water was actually disconnected and that was part of our case that was building up. So that was also part of the reason why he had to vacate. There were no, there wasn't proper utilities.
We're just now coming on another extension that has expired and, and here we are. And, and you're thinking that ninety more days, your department can solve this problem?
The, the reason I say ninety days with this situation is one, because we obviously want to provide a reasonable time for compliance, which they have had. In addition to that, as I said, the family is working on the estate and I'll let them speak to where they're at if they're here. But my office needs time to prepare for demolition. It's council's discretion on how long they want to provide. They don't legally have to provide any additional time. You could just immediately order repair or demolish and come tomorrow, I'll begin that process. But it's council's discretion on that. My recommendation is the ninety days for the family to figure out the estate and if they're going to sell it, sell it and go from there, but.
Okay, let's fast forward ninety days and you're back in front of us and nothing's been done. What then?
So if council passes this ordinance tonight, there would be that ninety-day timeline for compliance given to the family. This would not come back before council passes of this ordinance, greenlights my office to move forward with preparing for demolition, so I would hire an asbestos assessment company and proceed with our demolition process.
I have great feeling for, for folks that are in the situation like this, but I have equally great feelings for the people who live around it. And they're the ones that are suffering since January of 2020, just like, well, I'll leave it at that. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Well, I recognize the homeowner. Is the homeowner here? Recognize the homeowner.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes, sir.
So are the property owners not there?
I don't, I haven't known to stood up yet. I don't believe they are.
Okay, well, I have a question for, for Mr. Renner.
Okay.
Brian, this is, to my recollection, quite a change of mindset as it relates to situations where we've given a lot of time, most of the time, you're pretty quick about proceeding with the demolition. So what's so different about this case than any other case?
I'm, I'm not quite sure what you mean in terms of this taking longer. If you're talking about the ninety day that's built within that ordinance for additional compliance, that is my recommendation based on the fact that the family has been working on the estate with the intent to sell the property and then saving the taxpayer money to not do the demolition and allow whoever buys it to do the demolition, that was the intent of that ninety days. If city council wishes to change that to a different number, fifteen, ten, zero, it would be city council's discretion, happy to go along with that. But that was just my recommendation for this ordinance based on consistency of what you typically see.
Right, well, yeah, that's exactly what I mean. You've described it perfectly. Most of the time, if I'm not mistaken, that, I don't see you give that grace, especially after so many instances of an extension. Councilman Rivingbark just laid it out. So I get what you're saying where the ninety day would be built in, but typically it's taken this long and plus these property owners are, are not here tonight. So I was, I was just kind of wondering about why the change of heart, not a big deal. Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone in the public here would like to speak on, on this issue in favor or in opposition? Yes. Anyone in the public wishes to speak in favor or in opposition of this PH one? City clerk, have you heard, had any comments received?
No, sir, I have not.
No, okay. All right, council, do we have any questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes, sir.
I just have a follow-up question for staff and sort of following up on Mr. Spears' point. What is our sort of average timeline between complaint and arrival before council? I know that that's going to vary widely because you're going to have different homeowners who take different actions, but let's say that you have somebody who's unresponsive, what is our average timeline, if you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, so I would say the, the fastest that, in my recollection, the fastest that council is seeing a property go from initial complaint to being before you for demolition would be probably just under a year. A lot of that is because of the, the hearing that we have. There's a very variable time that's provided, sometimes anywhere from thirty days, sometimes to upwards of a year. It, it's all situational based on the case and the evidence prevented at that, presented at that hearing. That's an administrative hearing that's done internally. So, and, and some of these are, you know, very long-run cases. This is a, you know, a five-year case from when we first touched it to when you see it. There's a lot of different variables that go into that. So I'd, I'd say on average, it's, it's a few years from when we first touch a case to when council sees it. And those are few and far between because of the effort that our staff puts into it from the moment they touch a case until you guys see it. We're trying to find a resolution. We, we don't want to spend taxpayer money to demolish somebody's house. That's not our goal. But sometimes these properties end up in this situation, as you saw in my explanation, a lot of things have happened since 2020. So, so that being said, I would say ninety days with a recommendation at our hearing is, is my typical go-to at a hearing, is I'll start with ninety days. Same with this, ninety days is kind of my starting point. That's pretty standard across code enforcement throughout the state. Agencies will have a ninety-day compliance period in there. Again, but it would be council's discretion to modify that in any way.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
I, I appreciate the ninety days, especially recognizing that this is family, you know, family property and that, all that that's in between, plus as you've mentioned, you're continuing to work with them. And so what I understand is that the end of the ninety days, if nothing happens, then you don't have to come back to us. You could just go on and do a demolish or whatever it needs to do based on what your, what your findings are, correct?
Correct, and, and we can begin. Correct, and we can begin actions to prepare for that demolition if necessary prior to ninety days. We just can't perform the demolition until after that ninety days.
Okay. All right, any other comments from? Okay. Hearing done, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, lest the council's wishes, I'm called for a vote on the first reading of this ordinance. I have a motion by Councilwoman Selad Andrews, seconded by Councilman David Joyner. All in favor of the motion, they've been known by sign aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And those opposed? Okay, you oppose? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that first reading passes, five to one, all right? Now, I'll ask, I have a motion for the second reading, which, okay, as council wishes to call for a second reading. Councilman Riven Bart offers a motion. Councilman Luke seconded it. All those in favor have been known by the sign aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, aye, all ayes, okay? All right, then that passes five to zero, okay? Thank you, all right. Next, we'll go to item PH two. Item PH two is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the city to initially zone property containing nineteen point twenty-one acres of land located at seventy-seven twenty-two, seventy-seven twenty-nine, seventy-seven fifty-three, and seventy-seven fifty-nine Alexander Road to M D seventeen C D, high-density multi-dwelling residential district, conditional district for a two-hundred-and-fifty-three-unit multi-dwelling development. Council, Deputy Chief Manager Tom Moten, staff presentation, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council. This presentation will be made by Senior Planner Patrick O'Mahony.
Patrick O'Mahony.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of council.
Thank you.
This proposal is to consider the initial zoning of property from its current New Hanover County zoning designation of R fifteen to the city of Wilmington's M D seventeen C D. That's the multi-dwelling residential conditional district for the aforementioned two-hundred-and-fifty-three-unit multi-dwelling housing development. The site's located on the western side of Alexander Road and contains approximately nineteen point two-one acres. It currently consists of a manufactured home park and single-dwelling residential uses. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request as long as the existing conditions of the site. Here's a brief overview of the voluntary annexation timeline and prior approvals for this proposal. We're here tonight to establish the initial zoning of the site. The previous hearing where you last heard this item in December was part of a separate process to determine if the proposal met the criteria for annexation. So we're here tonight to establish the zoning for the site. Here are some photos of the subject properties. Here are some photos of surrounding land uses. As mentioned, the site is currently in, it's currently zoned R fifteen, but was annexed last month in December, so it currently needs zoning to be established by the city. It was previously R fifteen in New Hanover County. It is surrounded by New Hanover County's jurisdiction and which are all zoned R fifteen as well. Here is the proposed site plan. The applicant again is proposing to construct the two-hundred-and-fifty-three-unit multi-dwelling housing development that is within six multi-dwelling buildings, five of which are three stories in height. There's one four-story building, which is the C-shaped building toward the center back of the property on the left-hand side of the plan on your screen. The applicant's also proposing two access points to Alexander Road, as you see on your screen there.
Use the pointer.
Sure.
There you go.
If I can find it. What did I do? Sorry about that.
There you go. Thank you.
There we go. So there's the two access points here, and the four-story building that I referenced here in the center of the site. The applicant's also proposing ten percent of the units as workforce housing for a period of fifteen years. Half of those at eighty percent of the area media income, and the other half are proposed at sixty percent of the area media income. Here are elevations provided by the applicant. Staff agrees that this is an area of transition, but a transition from the lowest-density zoning district, R fifteen, to a higher density is not appropriate in staff's opinion. This proposal is placing density away from services and away from a major corridor and does not have direct frontage along Market Street, and is throwing additional density within established low-density, single-family neighborhood with little opportunity for future connectivity to adjacent sites. Here's an image showing a proposed walking path using proposed or existing sidewalks to the nearest grocery store. It's approximately one mile from the center of the site where most of the housing is placed. Unlike previous annexations and development proposals in the area, such as Amberly Shores Project, which is shown on the map here, this site's not located on a major corridor nor adjacent to essential services, such as the grocery store, which I mentioned here. And there is additionally not access to a traffic signal along Market Street. Staff does agree that the site design provides for preservation of open space and trees and the proposed use and density, it's just that the proposed use and density is not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, the R fifteen, which is in the current area or the surrounding area. Based on that, staff believes that the proposed zoning amendment's not consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and were reasonable in the public interest. Staff recommends denial of the proposed initial zoning. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning at their November thirteenth, 2024 meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant's here as well to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone? All right, yes, sir, Mr. Joyner?
Real quick on the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. How, this is an annexation. This is sort of an island outside of the city limits. What was the general, how was that considered in that plan when that plan was written? Was that really focused on things within contiguous city limits, or did it consider these islands?
Right, yeah, there, those areas outside of the city were not considered in things such as the growth strategies map, where we have areas of opportunity, which you'll see in other rezonings. We analyze those areas of opportunities or mixed-use centers. This site is outside of that, that realm and that analysis. So what we do as planners, when we review this as an entire staff, we look at the policies within the plan and how it fits within the policies, how it fits within the surrounding land uses, the surrounding zoning, and the current existing conditions out there. But the, the wheel that you see on the screen here reflects those policies and analysis that was done by staff. You can see there is some support for the project. As I mentioned, that is based on the site design, the preservation of the open space, the large trees on site. So that kind of factors into the entire recommendation that you see on the screen and in the case summary.
With, with it not being, I guess, an island on its own, would it, would it not cause us to think about it a little differently? I mean, would it not get some different looks? Because I noticed, I noticed, for example, that you've got many, a bunch of modest non-support, you know, meaning that it's really not bad, but, you know, right? I mean, and you've got all those affordable housing and.
Right, right, and a lot of the efforts, you know, working with the applicant, you know, they've, we've gone through this process for quite a while for this project. And, you know, a lot of the, the analysis that staff has done is weighing those things, you know, the affordable housing component, the tree preservation versus the location component, you know, not being along the major thoroughfare, and kind of weighting those against each other. That's coming up with staff's recommendation here that you see in front of you.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Okay, I'll recognize the applicant, please.
I'm a lot shorter than Pat. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. My name is Amy Schaefer. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I do want to thank Mr. O'Mahony. Been working on that, and he didn't even listen. And, and staff, again, we do disagree on this project, but the, the process of working with staff has, has been easy, and they've been professional and polite the whole time. So I did want to say that as, as we go through this. H H Hunt is a family-owned and operated company. They've been in existence since nineteen sixty-six. Henry H Hunt and his son Buck still run the project. So they are long-term holders of their units and their apartments. They also do single-family housing and large planned developments. They are looking to move into the Wilmington area right now. Their projects span from Maryland to Georgia, all the way over to Tennessee. As you can see, these are their projects in North and South Carolina, and they're woefully short in Wilmington and New Hanover County. So they're hoping to rectify this with this project. Again, just to give you some context of where we're at, the green space between Alexander Road and Market Street, that is continually being redeveloped with businesses and non-residential uses. So the five acres in front of us, directly in front of us, between us and the Coastal Community Baptist Church, is currently under contract. I anticipate that that will probably not be residential soon. Again, as you can see, the services and business are coming down Market Street toward our project. So while, yes, there aren't a lot of services right next to us, they are coming. And the property behind us is currently vacant. We are asking for M D seventeen, even though we're only about thirteen units per acre. So where Amberly Shores is seventeen units per acre, it's about seventeen to eighteen units. It is closer to services. We're a little bit further away, and we've asked for less density. Also, that doesn't include any workforce housing. The current conditions, I think the staff report went over this quite well, but I would like to point out a few things. The property currently is on well-inseptic. As we discussed at the annexation, the developer, when they develop the project, will have to connect to water and sewer, so that will be available on-site. The property also has about sixteen cubic yards of contaminated soil from petroleum. That will all have to be cleaned up and remedied as part of the development as well. The proposed neighborhood will include enhanced designs, and it'll actually be constructed to the National Green Building Standard Bronze Designation. I also wanted to point out that all of the pictures that you're seeing tonight are from current H H Hunt projects. This project that you can see here is from two thousand eight, and it is still getting awards for the, the maintenance of the property and the aesthetic appeal of the property. So they do maintain and keep up their properties. As for the proposed site plan, this design really has come a long way. There are one-story garages, which are adjacent to the one-story homes on Alexander Place. And then you have more of a buffer. Then you have the three-story apartment units with the four-story horseshoe shape around the pool. That four-story will also be served by an elevator, which allows for a lot more diversity in uses. You can have seniors using all floor, all four floors. You can have disabled residents using all four floors with that elevator. It really opens it up to a wider range of uses. The architecture style we're going for is a coastal theme that was selected to complement the Coastal Community Baptist Church to our south, which is looking to add a future school expansion. And the developers, H H Hunt, have been talking to the church about that expansion, trying to incorporate that with their school. A lot of the comprehensive plan talks about compatibility and transitions. So we pulled this up so that you could see that there is a substantial transition between the current residence to the, to the building in the middle. And so here is the same cross-section, just with the three-story building, so that you can see that there is a transition between the current residence and the proposed project. This will be a highly amenitized project, including passive and active open space, bike storage, and a maintenance building. In addition to all of this, the E V charging stations, the city requires two percent of the parking spaces. This project proposes ten, and that number could go up if the demand goes up. And those are in the garages or available for use. There's a dog park and a dog wash, parking for boats and RVs, in addition to a walking trail. So we did have a full traffic impact analysis done. The pedestrian connection is going to be from our southern border. I'm having difficulty showing that, but it's the southern border, the southern yellow part that matches Alexander. There's going to be a pedestrian connection from there down to Market Street that is going to be built at the expense of the developer. It is outside, the city planning staff said that because the city can't require it, because it's an off-site improvement, that they couldn't really fully consider that. But we do fully plan to do that and have even talked to the Department of Transportation already about that pedestrian connection. The T I A also requires a southbound turn lane that, on Market Street, and that will be installed at the developer's cost. Also, this project being set back from Market Street does not add additional curb cuts to Market Street. And we'll get into why that's important and how that complies with the comprehensive plan in just a minute. So the comprehensive plan, Mr. Joyner, you asked, it's not in the city limits, it's not in the comprehensive plan. How do you know if it complies? So what we tried to do, similar to staff, is pull out different parts of the code that we thought this design complied with. One important thing, it talks about infill development on outer Market Street. This is pulled specifically from the comprehensive plan. And it talks about accessing off of a backage road so that direct access to buildings and housing is not accessed off of Market Street. So that's exactly what our project does naturally by having Alexander Road there. In addition, the city design preferences say that multifamily units should be set back from major corridors and thoroughfares. So again, not only are we set back from Market Street by having Alexander Road, the project itself is set back from Alexander Road to save the trees and the natural areas in front. We'll have gated access. There is a stub to the back of the property for Alexander Place. Should the properties behind us ever develop and should connection become available, it is being provided. It will be a gated access for fire, and then again, the gated access onto Alexander Road. At the community meeting, the residents did ask if we could provide an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence. And so we have complied, and that is part of the required site plan that you've seen before you tonight. Again, we talked about this at the annexation, so I won't belabor this. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to. We've tried to look for, for other access points. But being in the county, a lot of these are private roads. Nearby services, okay, so I think this is the big one. The Market Street Corridor Study, which is a city study, says that many trips are within two-mile walk, two-mile. This is a one-mile, one-mile radius. And so obviously, we took that two miles. Hey, we're a lot closer than that. And in addition, what we looked at was the Qualified Allocation Plan. This is not a tax credit project. But tax credit projects score you based on how close you are to services. So we thought, that's a good thing to take a look at. The maximum distance that they use for that is a mile and a half. All of these services are within a mile and a half of our project. And again, I spoke briefly about the fact that, yes, right now, there is a lot of R fifteen zoning around us. Well, one of the R fifteen zonings is the church. It's a church, it's going to be a school, and they're actually in favor. They've sent a comment, I hope they've sent one again, but it should be in your packet. In addition, you've got that corridor along Market Street that, as, as I showed in the zoning plan, the non-residential properties really are coming down toward this area. We've got the tree preservation, which staff kindly acknowledged that, that they've taken great pains to do. I wanted to include the cypress just because I think it's a really cool picture, and there's a grove of them that, that will be saved. And all nine specimen trees on the property will be saved as well. So to get into the specifics, these are what we have to show for conditional rezoning requirement. It's initial zoning because there's not, but we have to come in with a plan that you get to see. but we have to come in with a plan that you get to see, so we use these. Water and sewer are available. We're connecting at our cost. There's MD-17 at an even higher density across the street from us. The improvements to Market Street will assist in traffic conditions. And as our traffic engineer said at the annexation, these will be completed before we ever break ground. And there's no question of a need for affordable housing in the area. Again, you saw this at the annexation. We'll be connecting, and all of these connections will be at our cost. And thi- this also shows you the area that the right-turn southbound lane will be located, as well as the blue is showing you the pedestrian sidewalk connection that the developer will be providing at their cost for connection to Market Street. How are we consistent with the comprehensive plan? And again, this is kind of where we went through. One of the negatives that we got from staff was policy 1.2.1. Places, streets, and spaces that are visually attractive, safe, accessible, functional, inclusive, and have their own distinct identities. I can't think of a project that is more safe, inclusive, accessible, functional, and has its own distinct identity. We're having affordable housing, workforce housing. We're having a four-story building that allows for an elevator for multiple different accessibilities and inclusivities. Clustered development, clustered in a compact pattern, preserving open space and reducing negative impacts on the adjacent property owners. Here you can see where the development is clustered on the property to reduce impacts on the negat- on, negative impacts on the adjacent property owners. Again, wave transit, we, we do have the ride micro in the area. Expected impacts. Again, the four-story building is centered on-site. We showed you those cross-sections. The pictures on the top is an illustration from the comprehensive plan. The pictures on the bottom is an illustration from Amberly Landing. So again, these were negatives in the city staff report. But you match them up, and how are they negatives? How are we not allowing transitions? How are we not providing effective physical buffers? In addition, the city greenway plan, the comprehensive greenway plan, talks about connecting to the Market Street Trail, which we will be doing at our cost. And again, the Market Street corridor study talks about limiting curb cuts and, and limiting interference with pedestrians along the Market Street corridor. This does that because we're utilizing curb cuts that are already in existence along the Market Street corridor. And then my favorite part to talk about in any rezoning if I get to is the housing gap. I don't think there's any question that everybody on city council and staff agree that there is a housing gap. This project is going to take care of not only the market study gap, sorry, market rate gap, but it's also going to take care of the 60 and 80% AMI gap. The reason that the box goes so low is because the current housing gap, it talks about the rent range being 640 to 1,065, and a one-bedroom is about 940. So the 60% AMI will get us down to that lower range as well. We have offered to have 13 units at the 60% AMI, which is a low home rent of 930, sorry, 930 for a one-bedroom, and 12% of the units at 80% AMI for a HUD-HI home rent of 1,189 for a one-bedroom. Those are 2024 numbers. The 2025 numbers haven't come out yet for a period of 15 years.
All right, excuse me, Councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just want to be real clear on that, that one point. With 13 units at 60% AMI, I thought I understood you at the beginning. It's 253 units total, and you were doing 10%.
Yes, sir, 25. So 13 at 80, and, I'm sorry, 13 at 60 and 12 at 80.
Okay.
So 25 total units. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, okay, all right. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, sir, very clear. For, for 15 years. And those, those units will be scattered throughout the property. They'll have full access to all of the amenities that you've seen. Nobody's going to know that, you know, I'm renting the 60% unit. And so it, it really is just part of the development. So respectfully, we just disagree with staff about the fact that it's too far from services and, and not enough of a transition. And we would ask city council to approve the rezoning. We're happy to answer any questions. I have H.H. Hunt here. I have our civil engineer, our traffic engineer. If there's something I can't answer for you all.
Councilman Waddell.
Evening, Ms. Shaver. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
And I know a lot of it was, you know, what we saw after the, the annexation last time. But I did have a couple of quick questions that, that popped up in my mind as you were kind of going through that presentation.
Sure.
The first, you, you touched on the elevator-served unit. Will that just be building for that center building?
Yes, sir. Four-story, four-story buildings will have the elevator. So the, the other, the blue three stories will not.
I'm, I'm happy to see that. I don't think we see nearly enough elevator-served properties come, come in front of us just anecdotally, and so I'm, I'm happy to see that. How many units are in that building? I don't mean to put you on the spot there, but there's somewhere I'm going with this.
I'm sorry. I've, I've got that number, but I would have to look for it if I can check with H.H. Hunt real quick. 88 units in the four-story building, sir.
Well, I, I think it's important, especially in these elevator-served units, to, to maybe, I don't know if it's possible to heavily, heavily weight the, the 80 and 60 AMI into those elevator-served, but especially with the, the growing elderly community that needs 80 and 60 AMI. I think it's important to kind of take a look at that. I don't think it's probably warranted to put it in as any sort of condition. But I don't know if that's been contemplated in your plan of, of yet. If so, I'd like to hear just a little bit about maybe how you just, how you may put some in that.
Yeah, if I could ask Mr. Wamboldt to come up, Tyler Wamboldt with H.H. Hunt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. Happy New Year. It's good to see you all after the New Year. Yeah. Mr. Waddell, that's a great question. And when we're looking at those 88 units being in that four-story building, that's approximately 35%, like when you're looking at from a percentage basis. And we haven't gotten into the final design yet. With your approval this evening, that is the next thing, is to help us get into the final design, figure out where those units are and where they live and how they live. So we haven't gotten quite to that level of detail yet, but certainly something that we're glad to look at in final design.
Well, I guess my, my follow-up to that would be, we can expect to see a significant amount of those. I mean, the, I know we want to scatter them throughout, but I, I think it's probably, it makes a lot of sense to take a look and maybe have a higher amount of those 25 units be placed in a place that's elevator-served. Just my, my feedback to you on that.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that feedback. We, we say at H.H. Hunt, the best idea wins, so that may be the best idea. So we appreciate that.
And then I, I've got one every once in a while. But I have one other question, maybe for you. But I know that there was some concern from staff regarding connecting to water and sewer, and that kind of resulted in some of the, the non-support marks that you received. Can you just kind of walk through that you're, you know, how you'll connect to CFPUA that you've already kind of discussed with them? That there's, that there's sufficient capacity? Just, just a brief kind of overview of that?
Yep. So right now, as, as we said, we are not connected, but we do plan to connect water and sewer. The green are showing you the sewer manholes and then the water line you can see. We will connect to both of those. We actually have to put a pump station on our property as well that will be at our cost. And that's, I won't get to that, but there's a little square that's down near the church side, that that's the pump station. I can show that to you. In addition, our engineers have been talking to CFPUA. Because connecting to the services will require some upgrades to their facilities, we're also talking about a potential cost share with them so that while we're in doing the improvements that are required for our development, they can also, at that same time, be doing work to even further upgrade to allow for service, more service in the area. And that saves CFPUA time for, and costs for things like mobilization. You only have to take out the pipes one time. You know, you're increasing them in capacity one time. And anything more than that, I'd have to call our civil engineer.
That, that's sufficient. And ultimately, I guess my, my, my clarification is, you won't be able to rent these units prior to connecting them to water and sewer, and that water and sewer will be done at, at the cost of the developer.
Absolutely. That would all be required as part of the technical review and permitting that the city, CFPUA, and all of the other authorities do. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Robert Bar.
The, the two roads that give you access to Market, both of those have right-in and right-out?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the traffic slide.
Or DXL lane and a right-out lane?
Yes, sir. So the, the traffic, and I might have it.
If it's in our packet, I apologize. I'm having trouble connecting.
No, no, no. It's, it's all right. I've got it in here because I knew it was going to be a question. And I think it's toward the front of my presentation. I apologize. If you'll give me just a second.
I'll be here all evening.
I know everybody behind me doesn't want to be here all evening, though, as well. So we have looked at that, and yes, there are signals that will be required. So they are going to be, you can't take a left.
Boy, you can't. I mean, there's going to be a median there.
There, right, there will be a median there. Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, as you're, okay, we're good.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I guess a follow-up with Councilman Waddell's question about the hookup with the water staff, and this comes to you. Was that part of the reason you had the modest non-support? Because there was no water hookup?
Mayor Protem, no, that, that was involved when we looked at the annexation policy. That's where the water and sewer analysis came in. The, the policy analysis within the, the case summary doesn't really hit on the, the water and sewer aspect.
Okay, all right. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, now I'll ask is, um, if anyone in the public wishes to speak in favor or in opposition of Project PH2, please come forward. If you would state your name, please, sir.
Good evening, council. My name's Logan Secor, 2900 Newtown Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm not going to belabor the point since we talked about this back in December. I was emailing at work today, and I saw in somebody's signature they had a great quote. "Don't be a wheelbarrow. Don't need to be pushed to do the right thing." And I thought it was quite simple and quite elegant. And it's very rare to see somebody who does the right thing without having to be pushed, who sees the regulations and goes above and beyond. And the message that we as a community want to send is, do the right thing, go above and beyond. And I think this development is the perfect example. What do we want to see? We want to see infill development. This is a prime area of many services. I'm supporting this, sacrificing knowing I'm going to have to wait even longer at Casablanca Coffee Shop. I'll never find parking now. We want to see green space. I'm sure you guys have gotten hundreds of comments on the loss of green space as we've developed, and this is setback from Market Street. This is preserving a lot of green space. We see a lot of sustainability measures in here. Additional EV chargers above and beyond as we transition to EV-based society. Additional affordability, not just the requirement of 80%, but when I met with Tyler saying like, "We have a need. We have no way to tell you that you need to do this. Will you help us?" And they come back and they said, "Yes, we absolutely will do this." From every aspect we can think of, this development is going above and beyond. And so I'm in support, and I urge that all of you are as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishes to speak before or against?
Well, I'm sorry. As you know, I didn't come here tonight to speak about this issue. But now that I'm here, I just thought I'd check something in. While we were talking, I looked up, uh, what, the rating for H.H. Hunt Homes. It is not a BB, a Better Business Bureau accredited group, but Better Business Bureau has them rated as C-, because they didn't comply, did not respond to three complaints filed against the business. As you all know, I'm crazy about development in this, in this area. I feel bad when somebody has to annex something from the county so, and to into the city so they can get approval for their development. As much as we heard 60 and 80, I think it's 80 to 120 median income. Isn't that what it really is, 120%? And 60 to 80. So we're not talking about people that are working at Hardee's or work, work, affordable housing comes in all, as I know you know, but maybe a lot of people don't know, affordable housing comes in a lot of guises. This is the topper, top group of people that are working in the community. I want them to, to live someplace, too. But I hate when we go from R-15 to multi, multi-units. We don't need to do that. It shouldn't have to come to the city of Wilmington to get something passed that isn't appropriate. I don't live in this area, but I live in Wilmington. And as you all know, I pay a lot of attention. Thank you.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Penny, I'm, I'm Diana Hill. I live at 2210 Klein Road. Lived in Wilmington for 31 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. I had a, a comment that was sent to all of us, and I had some conversations with the gentleman who sent it. And I promised him that I would read it into the record because he can't make it here tonight.
Please do.
He says, "I'm writing to you because I cannot attend tonight's meeting, and if I did, I'm not sure I would be allowed to speak," which of course he would be. "I'm not a resident of the city of Wilmington, but I do live in New Hanover County, more specifically the Porter's Neck area. My children go to Porter's Neck Elementary School. Neighbors and I have been working with the school and the PTA to get the school board, planning board, and commissioners to address the issues of overcrowding in PNES and the neighboring school. PNES is at 120%, and a study done last year expects it to exceed 140% in the next couple of years, despite being only its fourth year. They have added four portable classrooms, and the principal plans to request two more for next year. That would be the extent of what they are allowed to have on that lot. Neighboring Ogden and Murraysville have similar issues with overcrowding, so hopes of redistricting are slim. Last year's study done by Cropper GIS stated that capital investments would be needed, meaning new schools would need to be built. However, the school board and the commissioners have yet to take any action towards that end. The county's student generation rate for this school is 0.09, which means we can expect about 23 students from here to attend this school, from this development, I expect he means. By the time this is built, Porter's Neck Elementary will simply not have the desks for these students. In addition to the school space, the county has yet to properly address the school bus issues. There are four buses for PNES at 74 students per bus and 668 students. We would need nine buses to accommodate everyone. Subsequently, the buses all run double or triple routes in order to pick up everyone. This meant that they have had to move up the pickup time to as early as 6:20 a.m. for a 7:40 a.m. morning bell. Being so early, many of the wealthier families who can afford to have one parent at home have resorted to driving their kids to school. The principal has reported about 375 cars for drop-off each morning. That creates quite a line, which the buses then get stuck in, which means the buses then have to pick up even earlier. Lower-income families in this proposed lot are the exact ones that rely on public school buses. If approved, they will find themselves with pickup times around 6:15 a.m., if at all. For this reason, I'm asking you to deny the Alexander Road rezoning application. Since you have already annexed the lot, the project, or a similar one can be built in the future. I don't know if there is a ruling that would allow this to simply be delayed instead of denying completely, but that would be best for everyone. I also want to comment on the use of annexation, though I know this is past the time that it could be changed here. I would love if you could annex the whole area. I would love to be able to support low-income housing in this area, but since we aren't part of the city, we don't get the infrastructure benefits like better roads, sidewalks, crosswalks, and public transportation. Low-income families rely on these more than anyone else. Amberly Shores luckily has an Aldi supermarket right next door. This property will not have that. There is a bike pad being built, but it's on the other side of Market, and there are no plans for a crosswalk. There's a gas station with some food across Market again, but with no crosswalk. And the medians that have been built, the only way to get to it is by car, which would require half a mile drive down Market to a U-turn at the light at Bay Shore Drive, and another half a mile back, the return trip being about the same in the other direction. These are all county issues, and we are working with them to address these. Last year, we got them to deny a huge complex with no affordable housing, mind you, closer to closer to Porter's Neck Road, because I was able to show them flawed data they were using to make decisions. When they dragged their feet last year, last week, the commissioners, uh, got a presentation about school utilization numbers and development, the Ogden-Porter's Neck area being highlighted as the fastest area for new development without getting any infrastructure and school support. Thursday, the planning board is looking at that same development again as part of a special use permit. If those three hundred and four units are approved, we'll see another twenty-eight students from there. Add in this development and the existing student body, we're looking at seven hundred and nineteen students in a school originally approved for five hundred and forty-nine, assuming no other families moving into existing homes, which would be unlikely. I know you cannot solve these issues, but I ask you to please not make it worse while we try to get the county to fix it. And that is signed Stephen Foley of 7913 Bonaventure Drive in Wilmington.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak on or in oppose or favor of this item? Madam Clerk, have we received any mail or any information?
Yes, sir, um, we received two. One from Natalie English, who, um, lives at 4317 Pebbles Drive. Natalie writes, "I am in support of this project, along Alexander Road for a multifamily development. Access to housing is the most critical issue facing our community's future economic development. Additionally, without increasing the number of housing units in our community, housing costs will continue to escalate, contributing to the number of housing burden and/or unhoused in our population. We must continue to invest in housing of every type and at every price point to ensure the workforce our, our employers need will have access to housing they desire and can afford." The second one that was received was from a Joe Sabina, 717 Latte Street. Um, he writes that he is in support of this project moving forward. It would help initiate new housing in the Green, Greenview Ranches area near Military Cut Off Extension. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right. Counsel, uh, do you have any other questions? Seeing none, um, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, I'll ask the council for your wishes. On this first reading of this ordinance, note whoever makes the motion must read the consistency and reasonabili- reasonableness statement, okay? I have a motion to approve by Councilman Charlie, and a second by Councilman Luke Waddell. All right, please read the consistency statement, sir.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to assign zoning to property located at 7725, 7729, 7753, and 7759 Alexander Road to MD-17 CD High Density Multiple Dwelling Residential District, Conditional District for a two-hundred-and-fifty-three unit multiple dwelling development, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies and the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report, and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning would establish an appropriate zoning that will allow for additional housing options for this area.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, one, am I, I'm voting in favor, okay. Uh, motion passed five to one.
Second reading now.
Yep, second reading, yep. Our promotion for, um, to approve the second reading, okay? Councilman Waddell, and seconded by Councilman Robin Bart, all in favor, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item is PH3. PH3 is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Wilmington rezoned property containing one point twenty-eight acres located at 1729 Allen's Lane from ONI Office and Institutional District to MD-17 CD High Density Multi-Dwelling Residential District, Conditional District for an eighteen-unit residential townhouse development. Manager Tom Moten, who is the staff.
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of council, staff presentation will be made by Zach Smith, Associate Planner.
All right. Zach.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and members of council.
Good evening, Zach.
This is public hearing number three, a conditional rezoning of 1729 Allen's Lane. The site is located along Allen's Lane to the east of Military Cut Off Road. The site contains approximately one point two eight acres and is currently vacant. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request, as well as the existing conditions of the subject property. These are photos of the existing conditions on Allen's Lane, which is currently paved in front of the subject property. These are photos of the adjacent properties and land uses. Residential uses are located to the south and southwest, commercial to the east, and medical offices to the west. The site is currently zoned ONI Office and Institutional. The site is bordered by ONI to the north, east, and west, and R10 to the south. The applicant proposes to rezone the subject property to MD-17 High Density Multiple Dwelling Conditional District for a townhome development. The project consists of five buildings and eighteen total units. The maximum density for MD-17 is seventeen units per acre. The applicant is proposing a density of fourteen units per acre. In front of you are conceptual elevations of the proposed townhome development. The subject property is not located in a designated area of opportunity on the growth strategies map. The subject property is located along a special character street. The comprehensive plan supports infill development where it's appropriate and when it allows for access to services along major corridors. A mix of housing types is encouraged in proximity to and within employment areas, mixed-use centers, and neighborhood nodes as identified on the growth strategies map. The proposed plan provides an alternative for the development of a currently underutilized commercial area. The proposed rezoning request also provides compatible infill, density near services, and is consistent with other developments along Allen's Lane. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, and that the request is reasonable in the public's interest. Staff recommends conditional approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and applicant is here as well.
Okay, question? Yes, sir, Luke?
I support this project, and my, my question is kinda germane-ish. It's really that I've been, uh, it's something I've, I've been asking about for a couple of years. Tom Moten probably knows where I'm going with it, but where are we at on the paving of Allen's, Allen's Lane? I know that's, uh, in process, but, uh, I see, I drove down it the other day, and after I went and changed out the shocks on my truck, I, uh, I saw that I did see markers. It looks like there's some surveying going on, there's some, there's some progress. Where are we?
Right, uh, Councilmember Waddell, if possible, like to call Dave May, Public Works Director, he can give you an update, or Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Beckner.
Good evening. Point of clarification, uh, we've, we've identified Allen's Lane for a pilot project. Pilot project involves not paving, but using asphalt millings as a new surface treatment. Allen's is one of about thirty-five different locations of dirt streets, uh, within the city. We're looking at using millings as a more economical method to manage the surface so that when you drive down, uh, dirt streets, you don't have to change the shocks in your truck. We've, the stakes that you see out there are for grading. We're trying to minimize the amount of grading that we are gonna have to do to put the millings down, uh, and we're working with engineering to resolve that presently, just so we can keep the, the amount of work within the scope, uh, for our in-house staff that are gonna be doing the work.
So, when, when do we think that, uh, I mean, do you have, is engineering here? And I don't wanna hold up the, this project here, but, and we can talk offline about it, but, um, would the millings be happening soon?
Considering some other issues that, um, have, have been raised, uh, we, we are prepared to put the millings down. I think Mr. Moten might have, uh, uh, some other information about, uh, other things that we're gonna consider before we put them down, but it, it shouldn't be within, within the next couple of months. We would be ready to put them down, barring some other issues that might be considered.
All right, we can get back to the business in front of us, I just thought it was a good time to, to bring that up something.
Dave, for clarity's sake, would you explain to the folks listening or hearing the audience what you mean by the millings?
Certainly, asphalt millings are, are simply the, the material. When, uh, when you see a big machine on, on an asphalt street that's grinding up the road in order to put down new asphalt, the millings are simply the pro- the, the product that's coming out of that machine. We can take that product, and we've used that, that product in other locations and alleys, and even, even on another section of Allen's Lane. If you condition it correctly, and you place it down with a little bit of heat, um, properly, it can, it can be a very good wearing surface, much better than, uh, a dirt road that washboards quite frequently.
I know what they are, I just wanted to make sure everybody asked it.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and you didn't, and you didn't mention that it has been done throughout the city? I mean, in the area?
It has been done very sparingly throughout the city. This is, this is an attempt for us to look at it more in-depth so that we could do it in more places throughout the city.
Okay, and, um, you mentioned heat. Does anybody know why it is so cold in here? I just thought I'd throw that out. Is, is there something? All right, yeah, thank you very much, I mean. Okay, um, anyone in the public wishes to speak on or? Anyone in the public would just speak in favor and opposition? Okay?
You asked for the applicant as well.
Oh, the applicant, I apologize. Applicant, please come forward if you're here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protam.
Good evening.
Members of city council, my name is Josh Mahaly, here representing the, uh, owner of this property. This is a small tract, um, it's one point two eight acres. We're proposing eighteen townhomes on the site, it's currently zoned ONI. Uh, we looked at several other, I've, I've looked at this site for a long time, and we, and it, this turned out to be the best thing I think we could put here, was, was some, some nice units. It mimics what happens on the other side of Allen's Lane. Some townhomes, the Spartina Project, and the townhomes that are currently being constructed right now. So, we feel like this is a good bookend to Allen's Lane. This will, um, kinda provide, it's got good access to services, restaurants, um, so, um, I think, you know, these units will, will do good, and I think it'll help us, it'll improve this portion of Allen's Lane. It's not, we're not gonna, you know, improve the whole length of Allen's Lane. I guess the millings will extend, but, but as part of this project, we will be extending the improved portion to the edge of our, our project. Um, this is a site plan that shows how we plan to orient the units. You know, building one will face out to Allen's Lane, give us a nice frontage. There's a large oak tree, it's like a thirty-eight inch live oak right there that we've preserved. And then the rest of the units are kind of placed in around some of the larger trees, so we, you know, we were able to limit the, um, disturbance to the site. In our community meeting, probably one of the major points that got brought up, and most, most of the folks surrounding the area were very favorable for the project. I think the biggest thing that came about was Allen's Lane itself, and the improvement of Allen's Lane and the dust. So, um, hopefully that's something that the millings will resolve. And then, as far as the planning board went, we had a very favorable recommendation from the planning board. Uh, one of the concerns that they had was some of the, some of the things relation, related to the parking, and we were able to modify the plan, um, slightly to add some additional, um, off-street parking and shift the buildings to add some more driveway space. That was one of the things they were concerned about, and I'll show you how we did that in a second. There'll be one access to Allen's Lane, um, up, you know, right there next to the tree. This is where the site sits, it sits next to the, um, Duke Progress Energy, Kent Homes, you've got PT's Grill, Slice of Life, um, it's adjacent to the, you know, several other, you know, patio homes in Lions Gate. It's kind of a context plan showing you where the site sits. It's, it's kinda overgrown right now, there's, like I said, there's a few nice trees on this, on the site. We plan on saving all of them. Survey. This is the current site plan, and the road section of how we would tie into the, uh, currently improved portion of Allen's Lane and curb cuts. Uh, stormwater, um, be pretty, it's a pretty minimal site. We don't, we don't have a whole lot of impervious for this site, but our stormwater will be capturing, conveying that through the site and through an outlet that's, um, kinda to the northeast side of the, of the project. And, um, our civil engineer's here, but he's, he's got all that worked out. We've done some, done some different analysis on how we're gonna, how we're gonna treat that and convey the water, but I, I think we feel pretty good about how that is all gonna work. Uh, this is that parking study we did to show how, um, these units will have garages. We'll be able to put two cars underneath the building, so we're, you know, by doing that, we're, we're reducing the impervious, um, quite a bit. So, each car, each unit will have, will have the ability to, to put at least two cars underneath the house, underneath the unit, potentially three. And then we've also got additional seven, seven cars for off-street parking, we feel like that was, so. And these are some elevations of the townhomes, um. Again, these are similar to what you saw down at the other ends of Allen's Lane, the Spartina Project and the Allen's Lane Project currently under construction. Uh, we use the same architect, and, um, you know, we're, we're looking to do a nice, high-quality project here, so, um, some of the elevations. And this was the previous site plan, um, I just put this in there. You can kinda see how we, we added some additional parking and shifted some things around since our planning board meeting in November. That's all I have. I'm here as well as a civil engineer and the owner, if you have any questions, thank you.
All right. Okay, any question? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, now, um, is there anyone here would wish to speak in favor or in opposition of PH3? Favor and opposition? Madam Clerk, have you received any information?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. All right, then, counsel, do you have any questions? All right, having none, all right. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Waddell, seconded by Councilman Charlie Robin Bart. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign aye? Aye?
Aye.
See statement?
Oh, yes. Yes, aye, okay. That passes unanimously?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I need to read the consistency statement, I believe.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at 1729 Allen's Lane from ONI Office and Institutional to MD-17 CD High Density Multi-, Multiple-Dwelling Residential District, Conditional District for eighteen townhome units, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies and the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and the staff report, and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning will allow for compatible infill development and provide additional housing options near commercial services.
Okay, and prior to taking that motion, um, madam, um, lawyer, I didn't close the public hearing. Do I need to close that?
Yes, sir, if you'll close the public hearing and then retake the vote.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, and now we'll get the wishes of the council, and the wishes were motioned and.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
You don't need to read it again.
All right, you read the consistency statement, okay, you've heard it. All in favor, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I have it in so ordered. Vote for the, um, second reading, motioned by Councilman David Joyner, seconded by Luke Waddell, all in favor, let it be known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, businesses ordinances, ordinance OA, one, OA, one, O, one, A. Ordinance making supplemental appropriations of one hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars from the stormwater fund balance to the stormwater capital equipment line for replacement of an existing road tractor. And then OB, companion, um... And then OB companion ordinance is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a freight freightliner road tractor from Velco Soul Velocity Truck Centers LLC of Greensboro, North Carolina for the Stormwater Division. Recognize City Manager Tom Moten.
Mayor Protem and members of council, staff presentation will be made by Aaron Beckner, Assistant Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. The proposed ordinance and resolution authorizes a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred twenty-six dollar appropriation from the Stormwater Fund balance to purchase the replacement road tractor for the Public Works Department. The current tractor, which is nearly twenty-five years old, is essential for hauling heavy equipment and supporting stormwater streets and maintenance operations. Our FY twenty-five Stormwater operating budget includes nineteen thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars for this purpose with the additional funds proposed to come from the Stormwater Fund balance. Happy to answer any questions.
Any question? Yes, sir, councilman.
The open syllable? Can we put it on that auction list or whatever we call that?
I believe it'll go to surplus, but it has a issue with the motor, I believe, so I.
Okay.
How much it's worth, I don't know.
We have this nationwide statewide thing where we put it out there to donate or sell. I was just curious what this condition was. I mean, is it completely broke down? We don't have one?
It it's it's operational, but it's on its last leg. Fleet is doing a good job of keeping it running. It's running for us right now, but it it does have a an issue with the motor seal, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, council? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll ask counsel for the wish and your vote. I've got a motion by Councilwoman Sallett Andrews, seconded by Councilman David Joyner. All right, you read the vote. All in favor, they've been known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Aye? Okay, that passes six to one. Now, I'm a second reading. The motion, the second reading, you pass. All right, I'll move it. I've removed that and seconded by Councilman Waddell. Those in favor of the second reading, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and that is unanimous. All right? Now, I'll ask the council for any questions. I wish to vote on item O one B, which is the resolution authorizing the purchase of the fire plant. All right, Councilman Robinbaum votes in favor. That's the Andrews seconded. All in favor, they've been known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye? You oppose? Aye. Okay, unanimous. And then I ask for a second. You will need a second reading, yep, it's ordinance. Absolutely right. Okay. Now, we're going to item O two. O two is an ordinance authorizing the approval of the pilot social district in the Brooklyn Arts District. City Manager Tom Cor.
Deputy City Manager. Deputy.
Deputy City Manager, yes, sir.
Don't want to correct you.
Deputy City Manager.
Chad McEwen will provide the staff report, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of City Council. I will bore you again with the presentation that I provided last night in full detail, but I will go through quickly to highlight the important aspects of it for the folks that may not have been here yesterday morning. The city has received a request from the Brooklyn Arts District Collective for a pilot social district program for a ten-block area of Brooklyn Arts District, Fourth Street. Social district, basically the highlights or details of the social district are listed here and are spelled out through general statutes created in twenty twenty-one. General purposes of a social district are listed there. Just as a detail, brief detail related to social districts as they exist in North Carolina in twenty twenty-four, March of twenty twenty-four, about ten months ago, there were fifty-five approved social districts in the state. As of January twenty twenty-five, fifteen of the top twenty cities in North Carolina by population have some form of a of a social district. Here's a map reflecting that March twenty twenty twenty-four date and the fifty-five districts that exist. We received a request from the collective the end of October of twenty twenty-four. The collective essentially consists of twenty small businesses in the Brooklyn Arts District. The request was a collaboration with the collective as well as partnership with WDI Christina Haley, who is here tonight along with representatives of the collective. We had multiple internal meetings after receiving the request before meeting with the group with WDI and the collective. They've made it clear from the beginning that this is a pilot program that they're requesting. The ordinance in front of you tonight would approve that pilot program, but their desire would be a long-term, permanent social district consistent with the Saturday option noon to five. Again, this this is a pilot program that will be three Saturdays in February, the first, eighth, and fifteenth, from noon to five P M. We've worked closely with the collective to make sure that there are no, there's no expectation or request for additional services from the city other than the current level of service that we would be providing. No street closures or sidewalk closures are anticipated. The general footprint, which will be shown on on the next map, is from along Fourth Street from Walnut to North Front. See, this map reflects that area with a small section of Red Cross Street, the sidewalk along Red Cross Street on the south side that would allow for access to Eagles Dare. The collective and WDI would handle all operational obligations of the requested pilot district, including trash collection. They've handled all public notification. Notices were sent out to everyone within the footprint. All obligations related to cups, signage, stickers, et cetera, would also be handled by the collective. Participating establishments would have all the items listed there provided to them to help make sure that they stay compliant with the requirements of the social district. Non-participating retailers would also receive signage notifying the public that they are not participating in the program. Cups, again, showing you the cup that was shown last yesterday morning that outlines basically the information that has to be included per statutes on the cups that are that are used within the district. Community engagement is something that has been really focused on to try to make sure that everyone within the footprint and surrounding area was aware. These are some steps that were taken to ensure that was done. There's two general statutes that that basically set up and spell out the requirements of social districts are listed here. If approved, the the next step would be to send a copy of the approved ordinance to the ABC Commission. And then after each February Saturday, we would have a meeting, a debrief meeting with members of the collective and WDI to make sure there's no adjustments needs to be made. We had also, assuming the pilot program is success, we would anticipate there would be a request coming at some point after February for a permanent social district with that similar footprint. If there aren't any questions, again, representatives from the collective as well as WDI here tonight, before you consider formal ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protem. Okay.
I have a question.
Part of your presentation that shows that that had the green line of where this would would be taking place?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I I'm just, I'm I'm a little torn on this couple of some for a couple of some for for a few reasons. The the twelve to five timeline is, you know, myself, I I'm not really. I'm a social drinker, but I'm not really a early drinker. Twelve to five kind of promotes this this drinking at this hour that I'm I'm just not opposed to. I mean, I'm I'm just not in favor of. And then also, you know, just that surrounding community. I I I may be more on board with this if it was more so centrally located downtown where we have bars. But this is like, the Brooklyn Arts District is is a community. And and, you know, this is gonna gonna heavily, I believe, in my opinion, that it will heavily impact the neighbors of of this community. And it just just doesn't really sit right with me for some reason. And and I get it. I get it. And I think if it was located in a different place, I probably could be on board with it. But it's just the location, the hours, it it just something about it just does not sit right with me. Okay, Dave?
I I.
Yes, sir.
One point I will make is the 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 time slot noon to to five on a Saturday, they they do have three special events kind of geared towards promoting the the those Saturdays. We we focused very directly and they were very receptive to the understanding that that we wanted to make sure that this social district, if approved, promoted the larger business community, that it was not quote unquote solely a drinking event. If you'll, I can show you back to these general reference purposes. We we discussed these general reference purposes. This is in their operational plan and nowhere on there does it highlight the consumption of alcohol. It it's geared, from my understanding, and I I won't speak for the members of the collective, but in in their presentation presentation to us, they were very much focused on rising the tide for all the businesses in the district as a mechanism, the social district being a mechanism for that. So and Scott or or Terry, if you have anything?
Chad, I under I understand that, but the the mechanism that has been promoting this social district is the consumption of to freely walk around alcohol in this district. I I can understand, I mean, if if it were, I don't know, apples, you know, it it would still, you know, you could put a an economic spin on anything, buttons. I don't know anything you could put an economic spin on, but, I mean, the the driver of this social district is alcohol. And and I don't think we can get away from that.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. My name's Scott Wagner. I'm the owner of Goat and Compass, seven ten North Fourth Street, in the heart of the Brooklyn Arts District. I'm one of the members here of the collective that brought us to the city, asking for your permission to do this. In regards to the twelve to five timeframe, we came up with that timeframe specifically because as a as a group, when we do our events, we typically hold them on Saturdays from twelve to five. And we do the the entire neighborhood. And that ranges from Flytrap at Walnut Street all the way down to Don Luca's to the north. The reason we chose five o'clock was specifically for our restaurants in our district because they tend to start dinner service at five o'clock. So we wanted to be able to have people come into the district, be able to be adults, move freely within the district, move from business to business, whether it's a restaurant, a brewery, a bar, an art gallery, whatnot, a retail establishment or whatnot, and then stay within the district and have dinner and help those restaurants as well. And as I'm sure you all know, twenty twenty-four was not the greatest year for some of our restaurants in our area. So we were thinking, what can we do to help those businesses as well? We chose five o'clock specifically to help those businesses transition from part of the events that we were hosting into their dinner service. And so that's why we chose the twelve to five timeframe.
Okay. Councilman Waddell and then Joyner, then.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You're welcome.
My my, I don't really have questions. Mine's more of commentary. I'm thoroughly impressed and and thankful to the collective, to the to all the business owners of Brooklyn Arts District, to Christina Haley with WDI for organizing and coming together with what's really a cohesive plan. It's promoting economic vitality in in this neighborhood and makes it, for me, very easy to say yes. I would say anybody who's watching this, who wants to get something done at the city, this is a blueprint for how you bring people together, work with staff, to really come together with something that's not thrown together, that's organized, and that propels everybody in an area forward. I look forward to, well, one, I hope this passes, but I look forward to coming down with my wife and and son and patronizing each and every one of y'all's businesses. I think this is really neat. I think it's innovative and I think it's about time. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Joyner?
I have just a couple of questions for you. The the main two points that I had concerns about when this was presented to us were generation of waste and especially plastic waste and then also potential enforcement mechanisms. And what I'll start by saying is that I really appreciate the way that this has been organized and presented as a pilot. And I think that for us to make a decision about making this a permanent project or even expanding this, we really do have to have data. This cannot be an up a up and down vote or a yes or a no vote on just letting this happen in Wilmington or not. And as Councilman Waddell just alluded to, this actually gives us as council members an opportunity to go and see it for ourselves, to be in the mix, to be a part of it before we're ultimately called on to make a larger decision. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that and I look forward to attending on at least one, if not more, of these dates. My question about plastics waste, I think about some of the businesses that are in this district that I enjoy going to. And I I really don't think of of times when I'm served plastic. I think of times that I'm being served out of a glass pint or a wine glass or things like that. So I'm curious, as we're going through this pilot process, can we try and solve for reducing plastic waste, looking at alternatives to how drinks might be served? So that's just sort of a challenge, less less of a question as we look forward. And then really what I want to hammer on is is the enforcement and the policing because I think that folks in the community are rightfully concerned about whether or not this is going to increase potential public intoxication. How is this going to relate to the residential aspect of this neighborhood? And so from what I've read in the report, not only is there no request for additional policing resources, but we've already talked with Wilmington Police Department about what their concerns are. And can you just share a little bit with us about what that process was like and the feedback you received?
Sure, we we had the internal meetings as well as meetings with the collective and WDI included representatives from the police department. There was apprehension about a social district in general. I don't want to speak for the police department or or the police chief. But to your point about it being a pilot, it gives us the opportunity to see if if they will work from a public safety standpoint, to make sure that we're we're not creating an environment that threatens the the public safety through use of alcohol and being out on public streets. That was one thing I think that the police chief really came around on is that we were gonna each week debrief and have that opportunity to see what works, have the opportunity to meet with the collective and WDI and in real time change and make adjustments as needed. There was no requests, again, that there would be extra services provided for the pilot district, social district. But that's not to say that we we can adjust as needed if if it's a great success and big crowds and we may need to to look at that.
I appreciate that and I I think that's going to be an important data point for our long-term decision here because it's no secret that we have staffing issues at Wilmington Police Department. It's something that we're trying to solve for, not only in the next budget cycle, but we're taking a mid-year look at trying to resolve that kind of issue. And so if we end up at a point where we are reallocating police resources and we are creating essentially an issue where we're having to deploy more police resources that are already scarce, it would not be something that I could support in the long term. But this is an important data point that we need to collect and I'm optimistic, in particular with this noon to five timeframe, that it's not going to cause sort of the rabble-rousing that people are most concerned about. I have a question maybe for Madam Attorney. What is, for whoever can answer it, what is the enforcement mechanism? I mean, let's say that somebody is causing a problem in this social district and a law enforcement officer encounters them. What what charge are they riding? I mean, they can obviously at any point charge somebody with public intoxication, whether they're in a social district or not, if they're violating that law. But are they also potentially eligible to be charged with violation of a city ordinance?
I don't believe so. It would it would be, well, it would depend on which, you know, which city ordinance it would be. I mean, it would be up to the police officer to determine which, you know, what would apply if it was a city code violation, if it was a state law violation. But anything that's available to them, public intoxication or any other nuisance-related or or whatever type of situation arose, they would have full. type of situation arose, they would have full authority, just like they would anywhere else, but there is nothing that applies specifically to social districts, it's just whatever other laws are in place at the time. So it wouldn't be a violation of any ordinance related to the social district, it would just be any other ordinance that already exists, or city code.
So the ordinance that we're passing tonight is more about allowing this conduct than restricting how patrons engage with it?
Correct.
Okay, I got you, thank you. The last question, which maybe I should have asked first, how was this footprint selected? This stripper wrote, because it's sort of that one strip plus eagle's stare, how was that the test pilot footprint that was chosen?
This was the footprint requested by the collective. There was, I think, again, I don't want to speak for the collective, but there were several kind of sponsoring businesses, business owners, and that footprint was based on those entities being included in it. I think Don Lucas was one of them, which was the reason it went that far north, Flytrap to the south, and that's where the concentration, I think justification is that's where the concentration of the alcohol, retail, and other businesses along that Fourth Street corridor are.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Councilman Salat?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Joyner asked my, that last question. I was interested in how the business on Third ended up in the Fourth Street corridor, but that answered my question.
All right. Councilman Robin Mark?
I think the thing to remember here, it's temporary, it's test, and I'm sure the vendors and the shop owners and what have you are going to work very hard to make this thing work, and when it does, which I think it will, it'd be a lot easier for us to expand it into other parts of the CBD.
All right. I like the idea, because it is a pilot. They picked three great weekends, because you know, you got the Pro Bowl, the Super Bowl, and then whatever bowl they have after that. So I think it's going to be a lot of traffic, so I think that's, that may sweeten the pot, you know, because there'll be a number of people downtown or in that area at that time. Okay, but I think, I still want to remind us that it's a pilot, so we're gonna, and I like the idea of evaluating it after every weekend, I think that's a good idea. Okay. All right, any other questions from council? Now, does anyone wish to speak in favor or in opposition of this? Am I in the right place? Hold it.
It's a resolution.
I'm sorry, I messed up. Okay, right. All right. I got lost, hold on a sec. Resolution, where am I? Okay, yep, we got the vote here, okay. All in favor, I've got Luke Waddell's approved, and Councilman Robin Mark seconded, all in favor, if known by the sign, aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Nay. Okay.
I'm sorry, it is an ordinance, so you will need two votes, but it's not a public hearing.
Okay. All right. So we've got, okay, all in favor, I've got four to one.
Four to two.
Four to two, four to two. Okay. All right. Now, second reading, right? Okay, there's a motion. Okay, by Charlie, and then seconded by Luke, to waive the second reading. All those in favor, if known by the sign, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Okay, nay. All right, so we'll have to bring it back. Okay, thank you. All right. Now we're at resolutions, Resolution R1 granting an additional 180 days for the owner to repair or demolish the dwelling located at 1115 South Fifth Avenue. Deputy City Manager, Mr. Tom Moulton.
That presentation, Mayor Protem and members of council will be made by Neighborhood Compliance Manager, Brian Renner.
Okay.
Good evening again.
Yep.
So, in my presentation, I have just some update photos about where we're at. Just a quick reminder of this, we started this case back in 2021, went to hearing in 2022. This went to city council back in June of 2024, and you passed an ordinance granting 180 days with a caveat in there to come back before you with a potential additional 180-day extension, depending on their progress and at your discretion. So, the building we're talking about, 115 South Fifth Avenue, built circa 1920s, owner is Macedonia Fire Baptist, Holy Miss Church of God of the Americas. This is the building. So since the city council meeting back in June, nothing significant has been done with the building, aside from cleaning out the trash and debris from the interior. I've been in contact with Pastor Fraser and other members of the congregation about what's going on with the building. Currently, what they're trying to do is find grant funding to make repairs. I've provided them with referrals to various organizations, including Wesley CDC, that work specifically with church properties, and unfortunately, those have not come to any result at the moment. But here you can see the inside of the building in its current conditions. We are still having a lot of water intrusion in the building, the basement's got some standing water in it, it's probably about a foot, a foot and a half, but the stairs have actually collapsed, so we're not able to get down there. The church actually was trying to pump the water out, and the stairs collapsed when they were making those efforts. So here's just more photos of the inside, showing the current conditions. There are actually holes in the roof, just to show some of that. It's a very large, large building, with I think a lot of opportunity behind it, but our recommendations to deny this resolution, to grant the 180 days, the reason behind that being, an additional 180 days delays my office's ability to do anything. For example, I have some examples of next steps that we would look at doing. Our goal is not to immediately move to demolish this building, I don't think that's appropriate in this situation. So what we would do, for example, is remove the plywood off that front, and replace it with a polycarbonate clear board that we have, that would allow light to get in, it's very dark in that building, I went through it, and it's dark. So if we were to have any issues, firefighters, for example, wouldn't be able to see inside of it well, so replacing those, at least the front psalmo clear boarding, would allow for some light to get in there in the event of an emergency, and would also, you know, reduce the obvious blight that this gives with the boarding. That being said, we continue our efforts with community partners, continue to see if there's, you know, grant funding or something available. I know members of the church are here, and they will speak on their efforts to find that funding. I know they've also applied on the study list to maybe be considered a local landmark. So there's a lot of things happening. We're looking maybe a receivership, that is an option that's within the ordinance, but we need to assess the feasibility of that. We'd also want to do additional assessments of the structure, we've not been in the basement, so we don't know the extent of damage that the water's done, so we would probably look to get a contractor and see what the full damage of the building is, and then we would evaluate any funding for repairs, if that's appropriate. We could potentially make stabilizing repairs, but we could also demolish this building if necessary. So, again, my recommendation is to deny the resolution, allow my office to begin that process of digging deeper, and making minor improvements to the building, until we need to make a larger decision. But I'm here if there's any questions about our case thus far, and what we do going forward, and I believe members of the church are here to speak to what they've been doing.
And so, when you say dig deeper, you're actually, your desire is to put plywood, plexiglass on the front, get in there and get the water out, so you determine what the basement looks like and all that, and then determine what else can happen with that building?
Correct. I think we would definitely do some, you know, the window improvements to the greatest extent possible, and then we would need to, as you said, get a contractor in there, and possibly structural engineer to see what the extent of the damage is in that basement, but obviously, we would need to pump the water out and find other avenues. So there's a lot of steps that would need to happen for us to get in more detail, if council was interested in putting money into this building for some sort of repair, we would be prepared to do that.
Okay. And you have been talking with the pastor since December or whatever?
Correct. Well, I've been in contact with the pastor very frequently, I spoke with him again this morning, unfortunately, he was unable to attend, he had a prior commitment, but as I said, members of the congregation are here.
Okay.
That would have some information about their efforts with historic preservation and other grants.
All right, thank you, Brian. Councilman Robin Mark?
Going back to 180 days ago, the only thing that's been done to this house is the trash that was inside, and the debris has been taken out.
Correct.
Nothing else?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a lien, what kind of, have we filed liens on the property?
Correct. We have a boarding lien on this property, it's a few thousand dollars. We had to board pretty much every single door and window to keep the people that were going in there out. So we do have some liens on the property, but that's the extent of it at the moment.
And what is the expected expense with what, the things that you've got?
We ran, you know, our general estimate, if we were to look at repairing this building, you know, to a completed state, it would be upwards of $175,000.
Well, we're not planning on doing that.
Right, and so what we would be looking at doing is doing, you know, replacing clear boards would probably be a few thousand dollars.
Stabilizing.
Right, and stabilizing would be our goal, if we were going to put any money into this building, potentially making repairs to the roof, but again, assessing the structural foundation, I think is the first step, that's probably going to cost a few hundred dollars for us to get a deeper assessment of what's going on with the building.
And do we have in-house people to go in there and assess the foundation and what have you?
Not to my knowledge, not to the extent of a structural engineer.
Okay, and that's an expense as well?
Correct, and that would be a lien.
Added to the lien.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council right now? All right. Then we'll ask for anyone here in the audience who wants to speak on this issue, if you will come forward now.
Actually, it's not a public hearing either, but if you did want to hear specifically from the representatives of the church, which is the owner.
I would like to hear, if there's someone from the church, if there's one representative, I'd like to hear what you have been doing, or what your plans are. Is there anyone here that's willing to do that?
We had the, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. State your name, pull your mic down. Pull your mic down, pull your mic down a little bit.
My name is Cynthia Calkin, I'm a trustee at the church. What I did was, we had someone to look at the roof, and they estimate $40,000 to repair it, it's a slate roof, and they said they could fix it, but it'd be about $40,000, but I couldn't go any further, because we didn't have any money, and I didn't want them to write up all the plans, and we didn't have the money to repair it. And the other thing was, that was one roofing company, and I had aerial pitches done of the roof, so we could see exactly what's on top, because they didn't really get up high, and I did, we have a lot of aerial pitches of the roof, so whoever comes can examine it better and tell us what needs to be done, but like, if the foundation is not good, everything else has to wait. And I did apply for historical preservation, because it is a 1922 building with some historical value, and they gave me a couple of places to try for grants. And we also talked to another company, and she said, right now, they're busy with a 70-unit house, but if they get anything, that you will let me know. So I have two grants to complete, I started one, and hopefully we'll get some money, because without money, we really can't go any further. And the other thing, you know, because people were breaking in, we did close the windows, and we have a security around our church, which shows us one side of the building, the front and the back, but on the far side, I don't think any windows close to the bottom leave high, so if somebody tries to break in, we'll be notified, you know, that somebody's on grounds and things like that. I'm trying to think if that's all we did. On the past, I did get an estimate for the inside, for about $120,000, so like, it's like $175,000, maybe more, when we finish investigating the structure, it may be a lot more, so we don't know yet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right. Council, do you have any questions? Yes, sir. Oh, I thought you were asking a question. Okay. So Brian, the recommendation is to deny the 180-day extension, and just turn it over to you, and have you do a deeper dive, and assess what needs to be done with the building.
Correct, so by denying this resolution, it would put into effect the ordinance that's already been passed back in June.
Right.
Our office could demolish that if necessary, but again, our intention is to do a deeper dive, yes.
Okay, cool. All right, Councilman Waddell, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just kind of same question you had, so like, the resolution before us is to grant the 180 days, but your recommendation is to deny the resolution that's in front of us?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any other questions from council? All right. I'll call, okay, I've got a motion from Councilman Robin Mark.
Wait, wait a minute, Mayor Protem, sorry.
Yes, sir. Councilman.
So we're going to, I'm confused. So why is this resolution worded differently than the previous one, and we're going to deny, staff is suggesting that we deny, so they can take a deeper dive into what's going on with this property? Instead of wording it like the previous agenda item, where they were looking to give the property owners 90 days to get their affairs in order, and to potentially help them? I'm a little confused here.
Councilman Spears, this is Meredith. The original order was already passed by council to repair or demolish, and council had asked for this to be brought back to them, so that they can consider whether or not to grant additional time, and so that's why it was written as a resolution to approve, but it's not staff's recommendation that it be approved, they're recommending denial. So the original one was granted, but they're asking for you to not give more time, but they wanted to make sure council had the option of being able to give additional time if you were so inclined.
Right, Meredith, so if we deny giving more time, then Officer Renner has said this multiple times, then the discretion goes solely to his office, whether they demolish, repair, or whatever?
Yes, sir, just like any other resolution that you would pass to repair or demolish, once that time has passed, if it hasn't been repaired or demolished, typically speaking, that discretion goes solely to his office, and so this kind of puts, if you deny this resolution, then it just puts it back in the regular rotation of how things would happen. This was an unusual situation, where council had specifically asked for this one to come back at the end, and so this is a little bit different than what normally happens, but this, if you deny it, it'll be put back to where it normally is, which is at the end of the period that council has granted in the original repair or demolition order. If it hasn't been done, then that discretion is with Mr. Renner's office to move forward with any repairs or demolition.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the 180 days, have they had 180 days?
Yes, sir.
They've had 180 days, yeah, because that, I remember we discussed this quite a bit, and I remember saying, you know, we need you guys to come back and show us something, and from what I understand, very little has been done. Correct? Okay.
Yes, sir, I believe that the original was for, that was asked for was 90 days, kind of like the one that you heard previously, but council had said to give 180 days, and then bring it back for more consideration, so that's why 180 days is in this.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
Please, as the council, certainly the manager's office would be pleased to notify council on a regular basis about the status of this particular issue, particularly given the significance historically of the facility, and give you adequate notice if we find ourselves in a situation where we're proceeding with demolition, if that is a desire of council.
I would like to see that. General consensus, yes. Okay, so please do that. All right, so the motion is that we deny this R1, it's motioned by Councilman Robin Mark, seconded by Councilman Luke. Those in favor, they're known by the sign, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. And that passes five to one. Okay. Thank you. Now we'll go to Resolution Two. Resolution Two is authorizing the award of a construction contract in the amount of 1,787,499 dollars to Wells Brothers Construction Company Incorporated for the Olson Park Phase Two project. Recognize Deputy City Manager Tom Moton.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, staff presentation by Rachel McIntyre, project manager.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. Before you use a resolution authorizing the award of a construction contract for the Olson Park Phase Two project to Wells Brothers Construction Company in the amount of 1,787,499 dollars. This project is funded from the 2016 Wilmington Parks Bond Referendum and includes a multipurpose field for pickleball courts, an asphalt drive with 20 additional parking spaces, and approximately 3,600 linear feet of asphalt trail. This award also includes the acceptance of two bid alternates, alternate three, which will install conduit for future lighting of the multipurpose field and pickleball courts, as well as alternate six, which will install conduit and GFCIs for future outlets at the multipurpose field and pickleball courts. There is an existing interlocal agreement between the city and New Hanover County for development at Olson Park. And construction and related costs will be shared with the county. In the interlocal agreement, the county received a credit towards park development costs for its land contribution during Phase One. To date, the county has a remaining credit of 233,393 dollars and 50 cents, which will be applied to its share of the construction contract, leaving 660,355 dollars and 98 cents to be paid by New Hanover County. The remaining 1,127,142 dollars and 99 cents will be paid by the city. Staff recommends approval of this item, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions, council? All right. What's, what are your wishes? All right, we've got a move to approve their second. Second approved by, seconded by Councilman Robin Bark. Those in favor, they're known by the sign, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. And that passes unanimously. Next item is R3, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a 2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of 40,028 dollars to be matched with the local funds in the amount of 4,003 dollars. Deputy City Manager, Tom Moton.
Staff presentation by Assistant Fire Chief Derek Mickler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem, council, the Wilmington Fire Department respectfully requests approval for the opportunity to take advantage of the 2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant program. This program assists in processing additional funding to fire departments to protect health and safety with specific equipment needs. Based on the prioritized equipment from the 2024 AFG list, the Wilmington Fire Department identified the opportunity to purchase a specialized drone that can enhance health and safety by including the ability to perform hazardous materials atmospheric monitoring. This also allows distance measuring, hot zone classification, and thermal temperature regulation. The Wilmington Fire Department first initiated our drone program a few years ago by creating AIR15 at Station 15. It has since been relocated to Station 5 to become what's called AIR5 at the hazmat station. Our drone's current capabilities allow for some thermal capabilities overall and recon. However, accepting this new specialized drone will enhance those capabilities tremendously while fulfilling a need for specialized hazardous materials monitoring capability from the AFG equipment program. This would be also added as a collaboration with the WPD and Sable program. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Sure. All right. What's the wishes of council? Got approval by Councilman Waddell, seconded by Councilman Robin Bark. You heard the question. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number Four, a resolution authorizing a contract with RouteWare Incorporated of Portland, Oregon for recycling and trash services support software in the amount of 177,984 dollars. City Man, Deputy Manager, Tom Moton.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council, Dave May's Public Works Director will present this information. He'll also utilize this occasion to give you a quick update on the transition to the automated sideload or collection services that we went into in September.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. Dave?
As Mr. Moton said, I'll give you a quick update on our modernization as well as the pilot program that we utilize this software. We've already utilized this software to test it out. Okay. So just to, I'll give you a quick update on, on the, on the new trucks that we're using, the software pilot, the new routes and some adjustments that we've had to make, temporary labor usage, cart placement and collection issues that we've had, some customer service updates. These new trucks and the new routes started on September 23rd. We had a startup period where for about six weeks after that, we allowed a second operator to ride in the ASL truck. So that first six weeks, we had two operators in those trucks and it was really crucial to help them learn the routes and also learn, learn the operation. On the trucks, for operating costs, we've, we've been pleasantly surprised that the ASLs are actually proving to be a little bit more cost-effective in terms of their overall costs. They're a little bit more costly in terms of fuel, but they're less costly in terms of maintenance. And that really is being driven by the quality of the truck itself. The preventative maintenance frequency is what's driving that at 1,250 hours, every 1,250 hours versus a rearload packer that has to be preventative maintenance every 200 hours. So that's really affecting the, the, the operating costs. In addition to that, just to be fully accountable, accidents. We knew that when we put these trucks out in the field, we're going to have some things that happen that we don't want to happen. And that proved to be exactly as we anticipated in October, right after we started. We had about eight accidents and that's abnormal, but we did anticipate it. The, the photograph there of the mailbox is an example of the, the type of accident that we had. And we had, the mailboxes were the most popular of those eight accidents. Back, but I, I do want to reiterate to the credit of the operators. They have done an extremely good job of correcting that. So the next month, we went right back to what was more normalized and we've only had one accident in the month of November. So it's, it's continued to be normal after that. RouteWare and Rubicon, I want to reiterate that that's a synonymous in this, in this discussion. There's been an acquisition of that company during our pilot program. So when I say Rubicon, I'm also talking about RouteWare. This software offers us to have an iPad display for the operators in the truck. It shows them the customer locations. It provides them turn-by-turn directions. It allows us to have cart collection documentation as well as exceptions, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. It provides us extremely improved, real-time customer service informa, uh, information. We are now, we've now been able to change our pre and post-vehicle trip inspections from paper copies to automated. We have real-time route assignments. When a truck breaks down out in the field, we have to assign another truck to it. We can do that online so that the operator doesn't even, we don't even have to call him. He just looks at the screen and he's able to go to that route and, and help, help the person whose truck is broken down. We collect landfill information now automated. And the software has pretty significant reporting capabilities, some of which I'll be able to show you. So the, the, during the software pilot, we were able to identify all the routes. In the top left of the screen here is an example of Route 103, which is a Monday route. This is a, the driver actually sees a much more close-in view of this. This is more of a view that the supervisor would see back on his computer. All those gold dots represent the customers, and there's about 1,100 customers on this particular route. The, the bottom left-hand corner represents a display where the green dots, where the dots have turned green is a customer that's been collected. If it's a, if it's a gold dot that's outlined, it's, it's what we call an exception. And again, I'll show you the examples of that in just a second. And this particular example shows that the operator has gone, gone through about 50% of that route. When we started on, on these new routes in September, we reported to you that we're going to have eight trucks out in the field doing, doing trash. That's six ASL and two rearload packers. The numbers that you see are the actual number of stops or customers on each of those different days and routes. What we've had to operationalize is that it's, we, the conditions that are out there are forcing us to, to use the rearload trucks a little bit more than we anticipated. And so it's really, instead of two rearloads, it's really three rearloads. And we, so we've had to adjust some of the routes to make sure that we can get all of our customers collected. Why is that? In certain instances on cul-de-sacs, we've got parked cars that cause a, a problem for these trucks to get in there and use the automated sidearm to collect. In some cases where we've had streets without cul-de-sacs, where we've been able to turn around at the end of them in the past, we are now not able to turn around. And we've also found that some cul-de-sacs are just plain and simply too small for us. If you remember from dri, uh, learning how to drive, you have to do a three-point turn. Well, these trucks are having to do like a seven-point turn just to turn around. So in those cases, we've had to switch some areas, some streets, back to a rearload-type truck. One success I do want to report on is tempor, use of temporary labor. This, this graph here shows the trend that we've experienced. Before we started with the ASLs, we were averaging about 300 hours of temporary labor that we would have to utilize every week. During the, the startup period, that six-week period where we had two operators in the ASL trucks, that started to trend downwards to, to somewhere between 2 and 300 hours per week. After that startup period ended, really until now, we're, we're much less than 200 hours per week. It's probably a lot closer to about 150 hours per week. So what we have been able to show is that this change has allowed us to cut our, our temporary labor costs in, in about half. One of the big changes was...
Let's, do we have a estimate on, you know, like aggregated over a year, what that savings would be, cutting that in half? Any idea?
Off the top of my head, no. We can certainly get that and provide that to you.
Yeah, at some point. It's interesting. Thank you.
Sure. Cart placement and collection was a very essential and paramount issue when we rolled this out. We advertised, we tried to educate our customers. Spacing of three feet between the cart and all other objects, face the cart, the, the, in the correct way, keep the lid closed. The observations that we're getting from most of our operators is that many of the carts are still turned in the wrong direction. We can still dump them. It's not ideal, but we, it's, that's still an issue that we're dealing with. And primarily downtown, there's lack of really good placement areas on, on some of the routes. The exceptions that I mentioned, and this is part of the reporting that we get out of the software, exceptions, this is the, a summary of Rubicon exceptions between October 24th and December 13th. And these are the results of where we did not, we were not able to service a particular customer. You can see the biggest number on there is not out. That basically means that when we showed up, the cart wasn't there. So there was nothing there for us to go.
They'll tell you it was.
Exactly. You can see there's some other types of exceptions blocked. Open lids, overflowing. Some examples of that from going from left to right, overflowing. There's two, two bags sitting on top of that cart. We did, we would not dump that cart because when the truck picks it up, there's a risk of that trash being lost and spilled all over the yard.
Dave? Sorry. I'm going to interrupt you again. Are, are the drivers manually inputting this? Like, they're at a stop and they see an overflow that they can't, that they can't service? Are they having to like, press something on the iPad to collect that data?
Yes.
And then they go to the next stop?
Correct.
Okay.
So in, in essence, at each stop, if they do not service that, that stop, they will take a picture and then they will code the reason that they didn't stop based on what they see.
But when they, when they have a normal operation, they're picking up and, and servicing a, 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 a property, that automatically classes it in the system without them having to do a manual entry?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a, it's, it's a GPS unit, so, and it's based on proximity to the, to the location that's in, it's in the.
So it's not an inordinate amount of time for them to do these manual entries for these items? It's really, but it's a data collection tool and a customer service tool for, for the future, basically?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
So just.
Question, question, Dave. Is, is the customer being notified as to why the trash is being picked up?
That, that's an excellent question. The benefit of this software is that as soon as that driver, that operator captures this information, it's available to our customer service folks. Before we had this, what has, what would have to happen is we would put a tag on it. We'd take down some information on a piece of paper and then deliver that piece of paper to our admin at the end of the day, hopefully be, at being available within the system by the next day. What this system offers us is that the, the customer service folks have this information accessible immediately. So if you come home and your trash can is not, has not been serviced and you call us, we can tell you exactly what the issue is. The customer service representative actually can see a picture of what it is and describe it. We can actually email that picture to, to the customer if, if they would like it in, in an effort to get this issue corrected. And in a couple of slides, I've got some, some criteria to, to go over with you exactly how we're going about doing that.
Okay. Well, what, wait a second. I, I mean, that, that's a pretty good answer, but that didn't necessarily answer the question because as myself and the other council members know, there have been some instances where trash wasn't collected and, you know, they, they just jumped all the way up to the, to emailing the city council about it. And so I don't know if we can incorporate reaching out to that customer the same way in which you may put a, a notification on a car or, you know, put a, put a sticker on their door or on their trash can to say, if we can get some prefab notifications to say, hey, your trash was, trash can was turned the, the wrong way, or your trash was overloaded, or your car was too close to the container and we couldn't collect your trash. Because, you know, I don't think people are, are being really receptive of reaching out. They're not, they're not going to call you guys. They're going to call us.
Cart tags are something that we have as a tool. As we begin to utilize this software to its fullest extent, it is, it is something that we will have to put back into, to fuller use so that when, when the driver has to stop, and for instance, the open lid example here, he would put a tag on there and, and that tag would be improper preparation. And give them a, a phone number on that tag for them to call us. We can provide that more detailed information when they do call us.
Yeah, I, I think that's going, that should set the precedence going forward because, I mean, otherwise, I don't know. I can't think of what they would think. I just know that they're going to reach out to us.
Yes, sir. Understood.
And complain about it. Thank you.
Okay. So on customer service, just to go back to the week of September 23rd, we got a lot of phone calls. A lot of those phone calls, we averaged about 470 phone, excuse me, phone calls per day. Most of that was related to where do I place the cart, and also what day is my collection day? That has since changed. Our current call volume has gone back down to what is a more normal amount of about 225 calls per day. Most of that is related to exceptions, just as I showed on the previous slide, and normal bulky appointments. These calls, and I have to give a lot of credit to our customer service folks, they use, they take advantage of these phone calls with that direct outreach to the caller and give them that information about whether it's the real-time information they're looking for related to the service at their location, and also best practice of when to put the cart out, get it out there the night before. So just to go over a few scenarios so you understand how we have been and are trying to manage these issues. If we miss the cart, if we, if the truck showed up and we took a picture of the fact that the cart was not out before 6:00 a.m., then that's our fault, and we're going to, and the customer calls us, we're going to go back and get it collected that same day. If there's an exception and we did not provide service that day, and if the customer makes a correction for the cart being blocked, overflowing, contamination, or the lid was open, we're going to do our best to get back to that location within two business days, unless they don't correct it. If they don't correct it, it will be on the next collection day. And finally, if they simply did not put the cart out, we're going to tell them to put it out the next regular collection day. And with that, I hope there's support for use of, continued use of this software. We found it fairly invaluable, especially during the implementation of the new truck routes. Be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay. Got a motion to approve by Celeste, and seconded by Luke. All in favor, they're known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item is Resolution Five, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a $475,000 grant, application to the North Carolina State Energy Office for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Yes, sir. Deputy City Manager Tom.
Mayor Protem and members of council, staff presentation by Sustainability Project Manager David Ingram.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. In front of you this evening is an application to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, State Energy Office, for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Grant funding is in the amount of $475,000. The funding will be used to do energy efficiency efforts at the Skyline Center, such things as the LED lighting retrofits, the lighting system controls, systems, as well as HVAC distribution operation. Those target areas were identified through conversations and working with facility staff there at the Skyline Center, as well as in reference to the upcoming energy audit report that was done by TerraCon at that facility. We're still waiting for that final version of that report, but hopefully it's be, from what I understand, it's coming out in January. The funding will help us meet some of our energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the opportunity.
Any questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Approve, okay. Motion to approve by David Jordan, seconded by Celeste. Those in favor, they're known by the sign aye? Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, and it is so ordered. All right, the last item is RFP1. It's a report from the council's naming facilities. I am the chair of that report and committee, and here is the report. The naming committee met on November 18, 2024. The members present was Mayor Protem, myself, and Celeste. The recommendation is unanimous approval of naming the ball field at the Robinson Strange Park, the Sam Bowen Memorial Field. And with that, I would offer that as a motion, seconded by Celeste. All those in favor, they're known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay? And that's unanimous, and it is so ordered. Thank you very much. All right. If I'm not mistaken, that concludes the regular agenda. Is there any item to be brought forth by council manager or deputy city manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Attorney? City manager? City clerk? Okay, council members?
No, thank you.
Charlie? Celeste?
I just wanted to mention that the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees and other organizations are sponsoring Tree Fest at the Independence Mall on the 17th and 18th, and starting at noon, I believe. And so families are allowed to get up to five trees. They're all native trees and native grasses, and bring your own containers, and it's by the entrance to the J.C. Penney's.
Thank you. Councilmember Spears?
Just wanted to say Happy New Year.
All right, thank you. And I want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and make it a good one. Make it a good one. Now, is there a motion to enter into a closed session pursuant to the provisions of the North Carolina General Status Section 143-318.11A and 6, in order for city to counsel? City council to discuss a personal matter. There are motions for that. Okay, motion to approve by Charlie and David. Those in favor, they're known by the sign aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. All right, the closed session will be held in the council chambers. Everyone is asked to leave the chamber at this time. At the end of the closed session, council will reopen its public session and adjourn at that time. All right, so we'll take a two, three-minute break, and then come back to the closed session.